All right, welcome to tonight's regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September 4th. And Danny will start with roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Spears.
President.
Hevzner.
Here.
Pascal.
Here.
Farman Hunt.
Here.
Buckles, an excused absence. Goldstein.
Here.
And Chair Desai.
Here.
Next item, the agenda. Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of the minutes of August 21st. There's a lot of action in that meeting minutes there, so.
I didn't see anything out of order.
Nope.
So I would move that we approve them.
All right.
That's something they saw.
Get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. We have reached a portion of the meeting here for audience comments, so anybody in the audience at this time may address the Planning Commission concerning any item not on the agenda. Come on up to the podium and limit your time to four minutes and, yeah, come on up. All right. We will close audience comments and open up for discussion item, draft general plan, update review, water conservation policies, and implementation program.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll give a brief background. As you all are aware, the city is, has a serious water issue and, as you know, there's a water moratorium and building moratorium as a result. This is an opportunity to look at the land use chapter and these policies, water policies were first drafted and then sent to the Planning Commission for its review and then to the City Council. City Council prioritized the water policies and would like to have the land use element as we move forward to drafting this general plan to be updated to include water policies. So staff has taken the land use chapter and is suggesting somewhat to help assist with that. So what we went ahead and take a first stab at putting water policies together. And they reflect, again, the table that we provided to you and as well as to City Council. The text and the modifications, they're highlighted or shaded for ease of reference. I found when I looked on the online version, if it's not so clear, I will walk you through. All, as we turn the pages, I'll tell you where they are just for, to help you because I, you know, I don't expect you to read the entire land use chapter. You'll probably recognize the ones you've already made changes and that's not what's tonight's for. However, if you do have any compelling reasons to change something, then you can bring them up. But the focus really is the added water policies to the, to the land use chapter. We, there's the Water Resources chapter as well, that would come. We hope to bring that to you at the next meeting. We did not have a chance and it does require another department to update that too, but we'll bring that to you too because they're in concert with, with this as well, for obvious reasons. With that, if I can go ahead and tell you which pages and then we could start this way?
Okay.
Is that fine?
Yep.
So again, this is Chapter 1, Land Use, and on page 3, we added a section called Land Use and Water Conservation. You see two paragraphs there that has been added.
Yeah, I already jumped off some.
Oh, sure.
If I see on page 1, is this underlined where it says there are three distinct geographical patterns in the city? Or did you strike that, which is the hillside, the canyon, the foothill? Or did you just strike the, hillside, canyon, just left the foothill slope and the canyon hillside?
Yeah, that was.
From last time?
That was identified in last time. I think maybe just to clarify, the foothill slope. Yeah, those were the three.
Okay, now, when this, are you gonna re, when you revise this, are you taking that out?
Yeah, I don't go.
Yeah, that reflects what.
This is a red line.
We wanted to at least show you the red line to date and not have.
It's also over here in the land use, in the second document that we're looking at.
Right.
Yes.
You know, the.
They're almost.
They're almost identical, except interestingly, this, this draft here has the land use, I mean, has the water policies added.
And this one does not.
The other one doesn't and it's only brought to you so, for reference as you look at these implementation measures. And we'll talk about that at the next item. Some, moving on to, to page 3, unless you have any questions on 1 and 2, but page 3, we added two paragraphs. I don't know if you had a chance to read them, but this sort of sets the, the basis for the policies that occur in each of the sections, land use sections.
I have a comment about that, which, it doesn't really address the, the historical reality that droughts come in California. And so I'd like to suggest some verbiage that kind of addresses the fact that this drought may end, it'll take years to refill our aquifer, and we're likely to have another drought in the future, which makes all this water conservation stuff even more important. So this is what I wrote, but I'm not wed to it in any way, but this is what I'm thinking of. Even if the current drought, or when the current drought ends and it rains again, it will take years for the Raymond Basin aquifer to return to levels that will allow the city to use its wells again. I assume this is true. I think I've read that. In addition, drought is a historical reality and will certainly recur in Sierra Madre and throughout the state of California. Therefore, it is necessary for the city to implement water policies that protect the quality of life of the city's residents.
Would that be like a third paragraph at the end? Or, okay?
But, but just, the language is a little rough, but just sort of address the facts of, it'll take a while for the aquifer to refuel.
This is not an anomaly.
Yeah, this is not a one-time occurrence.
This is not an anomaly that we do have droughts regularly in California and it can be, we have no way to predict how soon they'll come again. And that we need to plan into the future for how we use water to protect.
Yeah, because, I mean, in reading these two paragraphs, which is very, they were well-written, but they really taught to a specific incident. Like, because this, this was the first time we've tapped the MWD line and because the drought condition has lasted two years, but it's very specific. And if this is gonna be in a document that's looking out 20 years.
Right.
I think what Gina's saying makes a lot of sense that it would.
Gina, can you share that language with us? You don't have to do that.
I can, yeah, I'll.
Yeah, and then we, we'll, we'll insert it.
Okay.
If the commission is, is good with that. Okay?
I think it just strengthens the whole thing about water going into the future.
Sure. So that's page 3, unless you have any other comments, we can move forward. Nothing on 4 and 5, nor 6 or 7. No on 8 and 9?
Page 10.
On page 10, we did add, and that's when, under the heading, "Land Use Characteristics", on number 1 remained the same. Number 2 and 3 we added, which basically just brought the rest of the list of items remaining, but we added 2 and 3. Should I read it for just someone? Okay, number 2. "With the water shortage emergency and the enactment, enactment of a moratorium on new water service connections, land use policies which encourage water conservation and avoid creating additional burdens on the aquifer are a priority."
I would reference, go back to what Gina said and say the water shortage, water shortage emergency of 2014, because there will be others in the future. You know, that's the starting point for enactment of a moratorium on, on new water service connections, land use policies, et cetera.
Okay.
I would just, I'd put the of 2014 after the moratorium, not after the.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it's a compound thought, but the moratorium is of 14, which means it expires in 16.
Right.
But as an existing document, they were looking forward to in the future, rather than saying with, shouldn't we say when we have a water shortage emergency? Does that make sense to you? Because it's looking forward to, this, this is just a one-time thing. The next time also, when we have a water shortage.
Well, again, I think, I think the same notion of some, the cyclical nature of this.
Yeah, we can.
Or, you know.
Okay.
The moratorium is only, is only in this.
Well, because this event.
The problem is ongoing.
Yeah.
Kevin's point is right. So I would just take, changed with as evidenced by the water shortage emergency and the enactment of a moratorium in 2014, blah, blah, blah. Then you've got, is a forward-looking statement.
Yes.
What did you say? As, as evidenced by?
Yeah.
The water shortage.
Emergency and the enactment of a moratorium in 2014.
Okay. Yeah, there it is. And then number 3 is, I'll read it. "An emphasis on conservation of natural resources, including water conservation, shall be a predominant policy and goal in the city's land use development regulations in order to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the existing population. The city shall enact and enforce development standards which do not increase the demand for water use."
So here, the only problem I had was, was with the word "shall be a predominant policy and goal" is, is, are you saying that conservation and water resource management is gonna trump all decision, that, that's gonna take precedence over how land use policy is shaped? Or that it's gonna play an important?
It'll play a very important role.
I think it would be better to say, will play an important role.
Yeah, yeah. I just, the word predominant, meaning it's, it's gonna be the overarching policy that will govern how you dictate size, setback.
Okay.
You know, all the other regulations. And I don't know if that's exactly what.
Right, and I, yeah, and then you've gotta do something about that last clause because it's too absolute. You say, "The city shall not enact and enforce development standards which do not increase the demand for water use," at all? I mean, you know, that, that's, that means the end of everything. I mean, you could say.
Well, should we do not significantly?
Yeah.
That is a vague term, but.
Yeah. You gotta do something, otherwise you just said you can't do anything.
Right. So you're saying.
And, and I would also add some, some sentence about that, that, and also promote conservation. Because, you know, you could, you could have remodeling or whatever and you want them to put in devices and apparatus which reduce.
Right, and promote water conservation.
You know.
The other, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine, no, we're fine.
I'm, I, the other thing is in that first sentence, health, safety, and welfare, I would kind of like to add quality of life in there.
Hmm, okay.
Because it's a, it's a, it's another issue that's extremely important to the community.
Wait, where's that again, Gina? After what?
Health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the existing population in number 3.
No, it's the third paragraph.
Number 3?
Number 3.
Would you like me to read the whole?
Yes.
If you got it fixed.
I think so. Except I'm not sure about the tail end, about the promo con. Okay, let me, let me try. "An emphasis on conservation of natural resources, including water conservation, will play an important role in the city's land use development regulations in order to preserve the health, safety, and welfare and quality of life of the existing population. The city shall enact and enforce development standards which, which do not significantly increase the demand for water use." Need to put in.
And encourage reduction where possible.
And encourage reduction.
Encourage reduction of water use?
No, we're, you say where possible.
Just encourage reduction.
Okay.
Encourage reduction.
Okay.
You had just got an extra and before.
Okay.
Health, welfare, health, safety, welfare, and.
And.
It would be and, and.
Quality of life. All right.
Good.
That's good. Thank you.
Well, you don't think that that wealth, of the existing population, kind of also trumps, gives people the ability to trump almost any development because they'll come and say, "That's affecting my, you know, quality of life."
Just take out existing and just say, "Population."
So that they're adding themselves.
The health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the population. You okay with that?
Because there, these are, these would be new developments where people are trying to join the population, not saying, you know, kind of a NIMBY thing where it's like, you're, I'm here, you can't.
Well, it should preserve the health, safety, welfare, not only people living here, but people are coming here, right?
Yeah.
It should be both.
The entire, yeah.
Just, just take out existing.
Of the population. I like that.
Oh, take out existing?
Yes.
Yeah.
You mean it.
Okay. All right. Nothing on page 11. On page 12, we added a phrase and it's second paragraph down, middle of the paragraph, it's underlined, and I'll read the sentence. "Hillside areas should be preserved either in their natural state or with very low-density residential development, designed to be sensitive to the environmental nature of the foothills, and to include water conservation measures to reduce and minimize the impact to the city's water supply and the ability to serve its water customers."
I like the sentiment, but I wish, I hope we can make that into two sentences because it runs on so long, you get lost somewhere in the middle.
Okay, just for clarity, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, I, I think I see where, I mean, it's just a matter of, I think we can break into two.
I mean, it can, it can just say, "Development should include water," hillside, or whatever.
Stop at foothills and then.
Yeah, just make a new sentence of that next.
It should include.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever. But.
Okay.
That's all you have to do, just say, "It should include."
Page 15, couple of pages further. The very bottom of Summary of Land Use Goals section, number 4 was added. And it reads, "Ensure that development is done to maximize water conservation practices to reduce and minimize the impact on the city's water supply and the ability to serve its water customers." Kind of taking that phrase and used earlier and, and, yeah.
You know, when I look at this document, I'm assuming in the near future, we're gonna be off the pipeline for the water from the Yellowville, and we go back onto our, our home wells, some of it.
Well, I think, I think the general plan goals, what we're adding is to get there. I mean, right now, we, we can't pump from our own aquifers. Yeah, yeah, but the idea is, the goal, and then, and then not to, to forget them because, you know, we don't wanna be in the same situation again. Yeah.
So when we refer to, like, because I think this sentence is regurgitated throughout the document.
It is.
Reduce and minimize the impact on the city's water supply and the ability to serve its water customers. So when we talk about the city's water supply, we're talking about what's inherently here, not what.
Not what we import.
If we weren't importing, what we would pull out of the ground.
Yeah, this is a city that has its own water department.
Yeah.
And has its own water system.
Yeah.
And we want to, we want to limit growth and encourage conservation so we can go back to matching supply and demand.
Yeah.
Correct.
It might be a really nice thing to say, you know?
Really nice?
I mean, this idea of matching the water supply to the, the city's water supply to a demand is really the, at the heart of what we're trying to do here. And that might be something we want to put up in that very, the introductory material up at the top.
Repeat that again. You, you said to sort of watch the wa, right, match the water supply to the demand.
To match the.
To encourage conservation of, of, of the, of the resource so that, you know, it matches the city, the city's demand for water can match its supply.
Yeah.
You know, because it is, you, you do reference the, the city water department that was enacted at a certain point in time. And this is the first year in its entire history that we've had to go to a, an outside source for a significant, for, you know, for, for our water.
I don't get that. So, what's the phrase again? Encourage conservation?
To reduce the demand for water to match the city's ability to supply.
Yeah, I think that's good. Because, I mean, I think that the, the.
Latice, did you get that? Just to make sure, because I.
Demand for water to match.
To match the city's ability to supply, but, or to match the supply, you know, the, in other words, we want to reduce demand.
Local supply or something.
Local supply, or the city's ability to supply it.
Yeah. Because I think that this issue, as we all know, is not only a water quantity issue, it's a water quality issue. And, and this is really the, what people are peeved about, right? You know, it's like, and this requires a whole new mindset in how we use water so that we can rebuild our, our aquifer.
Yeah.
And, and have that nice water back again someday.
It was dead fish, yellow water.
Sorry, didn't mean to laugh. Okay, so that's, just going forward now, we, we completed 16, now page 17. L 1.6 was added.
Can, can you read that back, though? I, as it was, as it was just drafted, I'm just wanting.
On page 16, or?
What everybody was just talking about.
That goes back to the front.
Oh, goes back to the front, under the heading Land Use and Water Conservation, page 3. Latice, do you mind reading it?
Going back?
I don't think I have it.
You mean to the, to the top of the document?
Yeah, they're inserting the, the sentence there.
Oh, all the way back there?
Yes. So thanks for taking.
So what are we putting?
Don't mind, because I, I just didn't.
In the expository or as a goal?
I think it's in the expository.
Yeah.
Is it?
Right there.
What I'm not sure is where it goes, but I think I got the.
You want to put it as a goal, you're saying?
I think it might be good to put it as a goal, actually. I mean, I wasn't thinking about it.
Because we were in the summary of land use goals on page 15, right?
Right.
Somehow we kind of.
No, this, yeah, this.
Kind of digressed.
We digress back.
Okay.
And we, as both Commissioner Farman Hunt and Spears.
Got carried away.
No. They created language that starts, "Encourage conservation to reduce the demand."
For water, yes. "Encourage conservation to reduce the demand for water to match the city's local supply."
Correct.
That's what I got.
And that might be inserted under Land Use and Water Conservation on page 3?
Okay. Where would you like that inserted?
Yeah, I'm getting lost.
I'm just, I'm just.
Because it might be better to put as an actual goal rather than just a, just.
Okay.
You could include it as goal number 5, under Summary of Land Use Goals.
What page is that on?
That would be 15, of course, 16 really, because, or actually number, number 11, because they're at 10 right now.
Wait, on page 15?
16, 16, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it starts on page 15, but then it.
Starts, yeah.
And you can add it to your.
Okay, so, yeah. Summary of Land Use Goals, 1 through.
Currently 10.
10, okay.
And perhaps you want to.
Let's just look at the scope of what we're saying there in those Land Use Goals. Okay, so you added 1, number 4, which says, "Ensure that development is done to maximize water conservation practices to reduce and minimize the impact of the city's water supply and the ability to serve its water customers." And then what's the next one we just drafted, verbally?
"Encourage conservation to reduce the demand for water to match the city's local supply."
Is that not sort of the same thing you're saying there? Could that be expanded, number 4, to include that thought?
I'd be okay with that.
Could it be part of number 4?
I'd be okay with that.
That's development-specific as opposed to consumption. I don't know if that bothers you.
No, I'm okay with that.
So then all you would really have to do there is, I'm just positing this, is say, "Ensure that development is done to maximize water conservation practices to reduce and minimize the impact of the city's water supply, city's local water supply, and the ability to serve its water customers so that local supply meets local demand." Would that be what you're looking for?
Yes, but it's too much of a run-on sentence and it gets lost in the middle.
Okay. Well, then you want it as a separate thought?
Yeah, I know, add it as a separate.
I think a separate thought that, I think a separate, just.
All right, so then the next idea after this would be, read it.
"Encourage conservation to reduce the demand for water to match the city's local supply."
Fine, put that in.
Encourage conservation so that.
Conservation so that, mhm.
The, 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 the language in there is not quite in.
It's close to what's.
It's close, yeah, but it's.
All right, so we have, "Ensure that development is done," and then I like breaking out as a separate thought because now it's about consumption as opposed to development. So what does it say?
"Encourage conservation to reduce the demand for water to match the city's local supply."
Good. So I put that in as number 5 and then renumber it down.
Or you could say, "Encourage conservation so that the demand for water matches the city's local supply."
Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
A noble goal.
Water supply?
Huh?
Local.
You put, just our groundwater supply.
Well, that is our local supply, though.
Yeah.
As opposed to down the pipeline.
Sure.
Well, there is another local source, though, right? Is there?
No.
There's two water tunnels and there's four wells.
That's all groundwater. Yeah, that's all.
That's our local supply.
Mhm.
So that makes sense to have that, and it's a noble goal.
So that would be 5.
That would be 5.
So everything else would shift.
Right. Okay. Are we good?
Yeah.
Can we move forward? Okay. Page 17, we added L 1.6, and it reads, "Require that new residential development," I would strike, I say comma, "substantial remodeling and additions comply with water conservation measures that reduce and minimize the impact on the city's water supply and, and its ability to serve its water customers."
And what will that look like?
Well.
When it's implemented? Bob Spears. Bob Spears comes to you for a building permit to remodel his kitchen.
It, it would be that if, if it's any, well, if we consider it substantial and we would create what that threshold would be, you would either have to, um, take your whole home and everything have low-flow fixtures. You know, there could be some building standards that we would apply that, like green building standards that would require you to.
It's like fire sprinklers.
Well, you might have some of those checklist items, you know.
Right.
Fire sprinklers, right?
So, I mean, we, yeah, we, we would need to explore what we would impose on you, given that you would do substantial remodeling to your home.
So I, you can make that easy by just putting in all adopted. So if you say, require that residential development and substantial remodeling and additions comply with all adopted water conservation measures.
Well, I think it's, that's assumed because everything has to have an implementation measure. So the implementation measure will be what's.
The adopt.
The adopted things.
Well, I was just trying to put some teeth on what Danny was talking about, water cons- what, what a potration measure.
Actually, I agree with you because, you know, my own personal bias is that, that we start having people have sprinkler systems that can sense the need for water. And if a guy is, you know, putting in a new toilet, and Danny says, and by the way, you have to take out that timer and put in another one, you know, there may be some emotional issues at the counter. Because, you know, what is my, you know, what does one have to do?
I'm just trying to not have discretionary.
But your statement ties it in.
That's adopted.
I mean, there would be a series of items related to each sort of project, I would assume, whether it's an addition, substantial remodel, new construction. That would have to be.
Yeah, we may have a, for example, we may have a whole menu of choices and say you have to do five of the seven.
Which could also include landscape.
Landscape.
Both in, in, inside and outside, because way more water gets used outside than inside.
But that's something we'll have to hash out.
Right.
As an implementation.
I like, I like the chairman's decision about a checklist, and I think you ought to start working on that tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, we'll do.
Well, there, I mean, there's good examples, so.
There are, yeah.
Yeah. We're not the first people to go.
Did I catch that, that you, you do wanna change?
Adopted.
With all adopted?
I think the word, just put all adopted before water conservation measures, 'cause if you've adopted them, then you can apply them. You don't have to be discretionary.
Nothing on page eighteen. On page nineteen, excuse me, we did add, at the very bottom of the page, L four point three. And I should tell you, too, as, as we go further, some of the numbering is off, you know, we have to redo the numbering.
And you use the same verbiage in a number of places throughout.
Oh, each zone, each zone.
So it's the same four, it's actually the same four elements got inserted.
And what, yeah, we did that because we didn't want, we.
Consistent language.
Make sure each land use, each type of land use had the same.
Correct, yeah, we got it.
Okay.
I had, under, um, the L three ones, before we get to the L four ones.
Okay.
I thought of adding something that said, encourage commercial uses that do not add a burden to the city's natural resources, including water resources.
Okay, I like that. So it would be one of the L threes?
Mm-hmm.
Can you say it again slower?
Yes.
Please?
Encourage commercial uses. That do not add a burden on the city's natural resources.
That's great.
Including water resources.
Like a sand shop? What are we talking?
Not that it matters, but what does L three dot six mean?
Encourage. Well, I mean, it's like, like, home office kinda stuff? Are you talking like businesses that are?
Yeah, it, it means, you know, not, not.
Retail space?
Don't take away the ground floor retail space, but, you know.
Office.
You know, encourage the, you know, technological, technology-type office space.
Uh-huh. Oh, encourage office, and you mean like, you mean, uh, like, office businesses versus retail stores?
I think it's office, it's like the idea of office, office and technology uses upstairs and realte- real, retail stores on the front of the street where people will actually see them.
Yeah, if you go up Baldwin, there's a.
Okay, I just didn't, so it's about renting the space to companies that use.
Yeah.
Or, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, okay. I didn't think that's what it meant, but that's, okay.
The, the ideal.
No idea what it meant.
The, the ideal example would be, we want somebody that leases seven forty-sevens, 'cause that generates a lot of, 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 uh, tax revenue and no, and no real burden to the city, right?
Yes.
Lot of money transfers, but there is no, no parking.
Right, the point is, you're talking about lease uses, is what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, it could be owners, too.
Could be owners, too, yeah.
Space users.
It's use of space, yeah. I mean, there's some language about this in the commercial.
Okay, I just didn't know, had any idea, and now I understand.
I mean, I think that's what it's getting at. It's like in the commercial zone, we encourage the office uses to be upstairs or.
Right.
Behind, rather than being on the, the street level.
No problem. As long as everybody knows what it means, I did it.
Okay. And then, bottom of page nineteen, I'll read it. Ensure that new development, so this is under, let me just, so we remind everybody what section we're in, general types and mix of land uses. And L four point three policy, ensure that new development and the expansion of existing uses incorporate water conservation measures that reduce and minimize the impact on the city's water supply and its ability to serve its customers.
Wait, I had a comment here.
Nothing on, if you're good with that, I'll move forward.
You got something?
No.
We're good.
Nothing on twenty, nothing on twenty-one.
Uh, 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 uh.
Okay.
On twenty-one, you do that, it's a thing that says, an emphasis on sustainable low-water-use landscaping and use of permeable surfaces at the bottom, and I would like to add also the use of irrigation equipment that automatically senses the need for water.
Where are we?
And open an office to sell it.
And open an office, on the second, on the second floor.
And, and use of irrigation equipment?
That automatically senses the need for water. You know, 'cause part of our problem is, is people have already set their sprinklers to go off every Tuesday and Wednesday, and if it rains on Monday, it's still gonna go off on Tuesday and Wednesday.
It didn't rain on Monday.
No.
Okay. Thank you. On page twenty-two, we added, uh, L, L eight objective in the box there, it's called encouraging sustainability. No, actually, no, we didn't, we didn't add it, it was there, but it only had one policy underneath it.
The first one.
Was the first one. And then we expanded it, and again, you'll see this language repeated in all the different sections.
So this one is for, again, we're under, we're not under a land use, right?
We're actually under residential low-density.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Oh, we moved into that, okay.
Which is mainly all the R one.
Yep.
Okay. And, um.
So this repeats.
R one zone, and this repeats. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. L eight point two, incorporate water conservation measures in the zoning development standards for new construction and substantial remodeling or building expansion as it relates to green building construction, the percentage of permeable ground surfaces, building floor area limitations, lot coverage, landscaping and irrigation, gray water plumbing requirements, rainwater capture, and design review.
Okay. My thing with this is, it's a, when we, and we've done this elsewhere when we were editing the general plan, is when we get on to an exa- a very specific list.
Mm-hmm.
I think this may not cover all possibilities of things.
Including, yeah.
Include but not limited to, or something?
That's what I was thinking, including.
Because this makes it sound like this is, these seven things is what, are what we're gonna be looking at in zoning development. But it's possible there may be one or two others.
I agree.
Do, do we have a definition of green building construction?
Yes. Well, there's a green residential, green building code.
Yeah, there's.
Which you have to comply to.
For, for who?
For anyone. State of California.
So this is a state, green building construction is a state?
Well, I don't know.
Building code?
Yeah, but it trickles down to the local level, so you'll have requirements for, from stormwater runoff to low-flow toilets to rain wa- rain barrel wa- water capture, all kinds of things.
So is, is that, is the green building construction? It's a defined term, I think, is what he's asking. Is it, is it? Yeah, is it, are all these things, some of? Objective or subjective? Is there, is there something that you benchmark that against? Is it green building construction with a capital G, or is it?
No.
You just wanna be green?
No.
I mean, you could change construction to code if you want, because there is a green building code.
Have we adopted that code?
A residential.
Have we adopted that code? Is it like the UBC that we have?
We, we have, yeah, we have adopted, we're required to, that, the, um, the idea is, we, we may potentially increase our, you know, go to another tier and, and make it even more.
So there's mandatory measures.
Yeah.
And then there's elective measures.
Okay.
Like tier one and two, beyond that.
We may bring that to.
What is that?
In the next, you know, few months, yeah.
But that's a state, the CVC is state code, so there's a green building code, dude. Especially for residential.
Yeah, and, and the list here, even though specific, and I, I like the addition of including but not limited to, but this list was, again, capturing everything that was on those, in that policy table.
I mean, it's possible that we may think of other things.
Right.
There are, okay.
But I'll, we'll add.
And I would rather leave, personally, I would rather leave it as green building construction rather than code, because there may be green building things that aren't in the code that may be good ideas, it just didn't make the political process of.
Hearing what your comment was.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, but I, I kinda meant it in a less restrictive way, because it leaves less room for people to come in and decide what they think green construction is at meetings and try and, you know, uh, turn, turn projects to how they want them to be green. So, I mean, if, if that's a definition, if there's gonna be some definition of it, we should be able to decide what we're gonna, what people can actually come in and, and comment on, not just, 'cause otherwise the sky's the limit, you know?
I think there are some, some of those things, but I don't know if we can, I don't know, this is where we'd wanna list that?
No, I know.
I think a definition of kinda what we mean by that.
There, we will have an appendix.
Yeah.
To this, we can, we can add that as a, as a definition, like a broad definition of what gr- green building is.
What, what, what we mean.
And you have to define the term, and then you have legally binding, so I like Gina's idea better of leaving it soft.
Keeping it construction, yeah.
Well, I, it just depends on what you wanna lock yourself into. If you put a definition in the appendix, then you have to make this capital green building construction, that's a defined term, and then you're gonna lock people in. I mean, it's just.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the definition could be fairly vague, which is construction techniques to benefit the environment, and that could be anything, you know?
Well, but then you would change green here, environmentally friendly, and you'd be done, you wouldn't have to worry about it.
I think this.
I think it's fine. I think it's fine.
Okay. Let me read L eight point three, then. Consider a water impact fee to apply to new residential dwelling units and additions to existing development to fund water fixture retrofits of existing homes and other water conservation measures.
Hmm, so how does this?
How does that work?
How's it work?
Yeah, do we, do we have a community that needs to be supplemented in that way?
Do we have a community that?
That needs the money to do retrofits?
Well, it would, um, you could take, um, well, I think, I think the idea when we discussed this was that when new development comes in, we, trying to achieve a no-net new water use. So basically, that, that additional dwelling unit is gonna add more demand to our water supply.
Right.
Now, we offset that by saying, you, you pay an, you pay a fee.
I'm okay with that part.
And we'll apply it to promoting water conservation other ways.
I'm okay with that.
Or, and or, you know, if people, perhaps, we have a program and we say, you know, maybe, maybe you qualify and we'll, we'll change all your toilets out to low-flow, we'll change.
Or, look at the city of Los Angeles has a program where they pay you to take out your lawn.
Actually, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, they pay you to take your lawn out, right? They pay you so many, so many cents or dollars a square foot.
And put in green concrete or something.
To put in, you know.
DG.
Yeah, to, well, to put in zar escape, you know?
Concrete.
So that, not concrete, no.
Okay. The part that I don't.
Or, or, you know, we give away free toilet, you know, we have this thing where we give away low-flow toilets.
So the part I don't like about L eight point three, and I, or actually, that I don't understand is, I get it for new residential dwelling units where you're creating another, right, intensifying the use, right? But you say, and additions to existing development, so if you add like a hundred square foot room or space or something, I'm gonna get charged to change someone else's.
But if you add another bathroom, then you.
I don't know, I'm just asking what.
Yeah, I think.
Why, what's the thinking behind that?
I think the thinking was, you know, any, any new development, any expansion, um, could pose, you know, an impact on our water resources, and you pay your fair share into this, you know, wa- uh, water impact fee.
But doesn't, in the case of additions, it depends on what, what the addition is, right?
Well, I mean, if you add another bedroom.
Yeah.
Right?
It's one more shower a day for the.
If you don't add another bathroom, you're still gonna be adding another person.
But what if I'm not adding another person, the people who are already there, or you, or for the.
Well, have you know, I mean.
What I'm saying, what I'm trying to get at is, I get it for a new dwelling unit, like, it should be targeted for, you're adding, you're adding a bathroom. You're intensifying the water use.
Right.
In some manner. It's quite possible there are additions that would not do that.
But there could be additions that don't look like they do it at the moment, but what, so say.
But you can't, that, that's the thing.
But you can't, I mean, that's what you can't say.
You can't police that. That, that's the part that, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yes. Let's say I have a house with, whatever, I, I, I have a house with three bedrooms and three bathrooms.
Sure.
Okay, I add another bedroom. Right, I'm not adding another bathroom, but even if I'm not having another kid to fill that bedroom, somewhere down the line, you're likely to have a bigger family in that house. And so in the lifespan of this house, you're more likely to have more water use if the house gets bigger.
But it may not.
Well, it may not happen with anything. It may not, if I put in a five-bedroom, five-bathroom house.
I might be, I might be using that bed- bedroom for an office.
Yeah, but the next person might use it for not.
Or they may not.
Or they may not. But it's the same thing, if I build a five-bedroom, five-bathroom house and there's only two people living in it, that doesn't mean we're necessarily using that much more water than two people who are living in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house, right? Because i- it's the amount of people who are living there, not actually the amount of rooms that, that tell you. It, what is it, how much water you use?
The operative word here is, is consider. Consider a water impact fee. It, it doesn't mean, it doesn't say you are requiring, the general plan's not requiring you, but to, to consider and explore.
I mean, I feel like if there are additions that specifically speak to, I come in with a set of plans and I say, I'm adding two bathrooms.
Right.
What is, so I'm, what is, so I'm gonna build a new house, I'm gonna pay a bunch of development fees. What part of that is or isn't the water?
Impact.
Develop, water impact fee?
It would be a new fee.
There isn't one now, right?
There, there is a general one, but there would, would be one specific to, to addressing the nexus to apply to water.
So it would go in a separate bank account that would only be used to pay for water conservation and retrofit measures?
Mm-hmm.
We have no separate bank account.
I'm asking the question, that's, that's, you have a development.
Separate accounting account, yeah.
Yes, thank you, a line item, that's fine.
Would be, yeah, it would be a wa- water conservation fund, and it would support.
So everybody who's gonna build something new is gonna pay a development impact fee and a water impact fee? If we pass this thing? Right?
If you implement an actual ordinance.
Yeah, having considered it and passed it, you're suggesting there's now two different things that you're gonna pay. And, to Manisha's point, if you, you would, on a remodel, you would, you pay an impact fee, and then you pay an impact fee and a water impact fee. You paid, you paid two.
Right. The, the water would be, you know, continued maintenance for an expansion of growth, you know, new pipes that we have to provide for new development.
Well, here's the, so, so this is six oh one, half dozen the other, 'cause if you say consider it, it can be debated at the time that it's being considered.
I've got a question to ask. Now, theoretically, if somebody wanted to come to town and build a five-bedroom house with five and a half baths.
They'd pay a fee.
But that's different, that's covered in new residential dwelling units.
Okay, what happens if I don't wanna build a room, I wanna put in a pool? Is there a water impact fee for a pool?
Yeah, it's an addition, existing development.
It could be considered that, it could be, you know, we have to define what addition means.
If you're using more water.
Well, we'd have to define what we mean by addition.
Right. I mean, that, you know, all, the possibilities are all there about how you want to shape this.
Okay, so let's, let's, I, I'm okay with leaving it, but my caveat is, the additions would. Okay, so let's, let's, I, I'm okay with leaving it, but my caveat is, the additions would be debated whether that, what that.
At such a time as they're considered.
At some future date, as to what that means.
You're reserving that ability to debate, yeah, I get it.
I'm getting the, the sense that that, that will get debated as to what, what we mean by additions.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm kind of paying devil's advocate with you, because I agree, there's some that don't matter, but there's some that definitely do matter. Some additions that people put in, like a pool.
Yeah. Well, I, I would be on the same page for that, but I think we would know that, I don't think we can police it in terms of what happens down the road, but when we're presented these drawings, and it clearly says bathroom and a bedroom or, or a pool.
But we're gonna, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to have some way of, of calculating it and enforcing it, and it, it's, anything that intensifies use of the town is gonna intensify the resources, and, you know, a simple method for him to do, I mean, Danny's gonna have to make a decision on every piece of paper that comes across, and it, you know, it could end up being just square footage or something like that, that, you know, okay, you know, point oh one cents per square foot is gonna go into this fee.
I know, but I mean, I'm, anyway, we could debate it, but I, I just get really mindful. I have a pet peeve of that too, where we, you go, and this is why I go on the other side of the counter, and, and you're going for something, and you get a litany of basically, it's like your AT&T phone bill, like, there's gonna be interstate surcharges, gonna be this, there's all these things, and you're kinda like, I'm just adding.
There's that utility tax on the.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know, I'm trying to be sympathetic to that.
Have to do it.
So, like, I get that, make it easy is just a line, but at the same time, when you're the one paying it.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's not a small deal.
It, it is not, but at the end of the day, it's our job to look after the interests of the city in its ability to provide service.
And I, I get that, but I think.
We're on, we, you know, yeah, but we're now on the other side of the counter saying, you know, we gotta fund all these programs and make all this happen.
I get that.
This may, this is just a consider, and this might be just one tool of many that we use to do that.
Well, I don't think I'll have any opinions when we do debate. All right, I'll leave it for now.
I'll bet you will.
I remember that.
It, it's, it's this thing about cumulative impacts that, that often gets lost in environmental reporting, you know, that, 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 okay, so this project adds two cars, and this project has two cars, and this project has two cars, and you have a hundred project, and pretty soon you have a lot more cars, and it's the same thing with this, you have a little here, a little there, a little there, and pretty soon there's a big impact, but it's so spread out that it doesn't get captured anywhere along the way. And I think, to me, this is, this is a big issue with environmental impacts in general. You know, very diffuse impact, everyone adds a drop, and pretty soon you have a single full.
And you can't go after one guy says, well, I only changed one parking place, yes, you only changed one, but the, the other hundred guys behind you also only changed one, now we're a hundred for sure.
I think that, that cumulative sort of impact is very hard to capture.
I, I, I mean, I, I'm sort of, I, I agree with Manish in the sense, it sounds like the parking thing, you know, we're trying to collect parking fee, buy parking spaces to develop future parking in the city, and it never amounts to anything, to do anything, so somebody pays a fee into a fund, and the only good thing about that is, like Dr. Sammy's place, in three years, if you don't spend it, you get your money back, you know, so. Well, I mean, that's the way that, that's the way it was when, when we passed it, cause he could buy, that was the only way he could get his development done with his parking spaces.
And, and now we don't have that. They, they, they were moved, I know, they.
It's gone, but I mean, it's still, do we have a, do, are we, I mean, realistically gonna connect, collect enough fees to even do anything of any pin- impact on the city, or is it just gonna be someone goes, hey, I heard there was some money, so you, can you pay to change my toilets, and then they go, oh yeah, there's money in the account, okay, good, and then, you know, it's.
Well, implementation will be something else.
It would, yeah. I mean, that, hopefully they'll do it.
All right, I'm highlighting eight point three here.
Would you, well, I mean, without arguing whether a bedroom does or doesn't, would you be happier with the concept of, and additions that increase water consumption to existing development? Then you can debate what does or doesn't, but at least it calls out what Manish is saying, which I think is fair.
I like that.
So, put, you would put the, and additions that increase water consumption.
I've got that.
Okay.
All right.
We can have a good spirit in that.
Well, this is good, because what this language will do is gonna repeat further, so.
Yeah, about seven times.
Right. L eight point four, conduct a historic resources survey to encourage retention of existing older homes.
What are you surveying? The homes?
Yeah, it's, it's an actual, um, professional survey that actually does a, according to the state historic conservation.
Water, how did it find?
Yeah.
Oh, how, how it does, well, it has to do with sustainability, in that you're sustaining, you know, you're sustaining the existing stock of homes, you're not building new.
Okay.
And, and I think part of the thinking behind this was that a lot of older homes have often been, um, replaced with new homes that are like double the size.
Yes, but in, in this, in this particular policy here, you conduct the historic resources survey, and it, it lists out two hundred properties or whatever.
Right.
Does, what does that tell you? Does it tell, like, how does it, how does it?
Sure.
Preserve that home that's on the list?
Well, it set, it sets the basis, we, we currently have a historic preservation ordinance.
Yeah.
And it sets the basis for, uh, the potential for it to be locally designated, when it, and then we have a local list in which there are protections, um, for preservation of those homes.
Okay, so this would be a surveyed target.
This is not a policy.
This is not a policy, this is an action.
Yeah, so we need a different thing that reads out as a policy, which is to.
You would just say encourage.
Protect.
Historic resources.
Protect, um, this, the issue we're getting at is what you just said, which is to protect the, the, um,
We could say encourage protection, protection and retention of existing older homes, and then.
In order to.
So, but what does that have to do with water?
Totally.
Well, you're not building, you're.
It, it doesn't.
Resources, right?
Well, I can take an old home and use a lot more water than a new home.
It's not necessarily, it's, it's sustainable, it's encouraging sustainability under this.
It's not specific to water, yeah.
If I got a, I got a nineteen fifty-four ranch house, it's, looks like all the other ranch houses, why, you know, I mean, I mean, I wanna, I understand the survey, and I think a survey of existing homes is fine, and, but I, I, I wanna know what other data points I'm associating with that home to make the statement that it is better or worse for the city than tearing down and replacing it. Does that make sense? Cause if I come.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a community value.
This one doesn't belong here. I think L eight point five belongs here, which is provide incentives for property owners to retrofit historically designated homes with water-saving.
Yes.
Yes.
Picture is definitely belongs here. But I think this is, it, it, I think what you're getting at here is, the point is to protect the historic housing stock, or encourage protection of the historic housing stock instead of tearing them down and rebuilding them with.
Which is a sustainable value.
But I believe, we've gotta have, gotta believe we put that in somewhere else.
It's, there's a whole historic.
There's a whole historic resources section that says the same thing here.
So that belongs.
The point that you, the reason you put this here is because this is under sustainability as a global kind of thing.
Sustainability.
By preserving existing stock, you're not deploying new material to build.
So you're looking outside the city, in other words, where did the wood come from to build a new house?
No, just new materials in general, you're, you're reusing, right?
It's not a water thing, it's a.
It's not a water thing.
Sustainability.
Okay, but that's what the heading says, encourage sustainability.
Yeah.
It's just that the water things were added into this section, right?
No, I know how we're hurting for money, so this is gonna be a law.
Well, you added this one too, actually.
That conducts a survey.
No, it's a.
We're gonna go out and pay somebody fifty thousand dollars.
Actually, you know what I would love to see? I would just love to see a, 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 a database that looks at the house, the house number, and how much water it uses. Okay, you wanna tear down that house, you're gonna replace it, we're already using X amount of water, is that gonna, is the new number gonna be greater or lesser? Cause that's really what you're getting at, that if they tear it down and replace it with something that uses more water, then that's not, that's a bad thing.
That's not what he's getting at here, though. In this, this isn't solely about water, though.
I think this is just to be, um, encourage, encourage the retention of existing older homes. And then the conduct the historic resources survey is an implementation, right?
Right.
Yes.
And we do have this carried in historic, so we don't have to repeat it here. So to encourage the retention of.
Existing older homes to reduce resource use is what it's about.
But you added this L eight point four, like, this is highlighted, so it was added in, in response to the water.
It, it was, although it.
Just another thought that.
Yeah, it was, um, as it relates to water, but it, it's not only about water, okay.
I said, encourage the retention of existing older homes.
Two.
To.
I guess I'll add a city council meeting. Chair on those twenty-year-old houses, cause they use a lot of water.
To encourage.
Yeah, but you, you already used encourage.
Oh.
Encourage the retention of.
What I said now.
Existing older homes to.
That.
To redu- to reduce resource use, I think is what I was getting at.
That consume fewer resources, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. In other words, the point is, if we know the home is conservation-oriented, then encourage it to be left alone as opposed to torn down, right?
No, that's not what I was getting at, I was getting at, if you keep a, if you keep an existing home, you don't use the new resources it takes to build a new home.
Oh, I was listening, I did not.
Regardless of the water.
Yeah, and not just, we're not talking about city resources, we're talking about world resources.
This is, this, yeah, this is just, you know, if you leave a house there, you're not throwing all that stuff away and bringing in a whole load of new stuff. That whole house is gonna go into the dump if you tear it down, right, and you're gonna have to get all this stuff, so if you keep the house there, then you're protecting resources, that's what this is about, I think.
Yep.
Hmm.
Some old houses are kind of inefficient, so.
I would say, have asbestos.
They're inefficient, but, you know, so it may be.
It's a footprint thing.
Yeah, you also want to, you know, upgrade them to use less resources.
That's okay with me.
All right, so.
Could be a two-sided thing, you know, so.
Do we have something there?
I thought encourage the retention of existing older homes to reduce resources?
Take off to reduce resources, say to get encourage.
Encourage the retention.
Existing older homes.
That's it.
Yeah, just like that.
Period.
Okay.
I think that actually is a, um, a thing that people in Sierra Madre agree with, actually.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, it's something that people wanna sustain the existing.
Yeah, don't tear down that house, we wanna keep it, yeah. Okay.
Which maybe doesn't belong here.
Well, it, it needs to be qualified, though, I think, where conservation benefits are evident.
But there's other reasons to keep older homes too, so maybe this belongs in a different place.
Well, that, yeah, if it's under sustainability, I'm saying, but if you say encourage.
Yeah.
Where conservation benefits are evident, then, then it makes sense.
Or when conservation, when there are conservation benefits, cause they might not be evidence. You might have to look for them.
Same thing, that's six oh one, half dozen the other. So, I take it either way, the way I said it or the way Gina said it is fine. Where there are conservation benefits.
But is there something, is there a separate historic resource section in here somewhere that we already looked at?
Yeah, historic.
Yes.
It got rewritten almost entirely.
Yeah, it got rewritten, um, it does, it does suggest that we do a resources survey.
Okay, so that's fine, if it's in here someplace else, then.
So what does it now say, Danny?
Encourage the retention of existing older homes where there are conservation benefits.
Good, yeah, excellent, yeah.
And then L eight point five, on the next page, provide incentives for property owners to retrofit historically designated homes with water-saving fixtures.
Well, we'll have a fund from the water impact.
There's either a fund or.
From additions.
Well, that's true, we, now.
We're gonna chair the fund.
Now we help fund it, that's an incentive.
Yeah.
I'd like to add, L eight point six.
We, this software won't allow us to.
The suspense is killing us.
Conduct a home inspection at the date of sale to confirm retrofit of property to existing city water standards.
Say that again?
Conduct a home inspection at date of sale to confirm the property, the, confirm the retrofit of the, of the property to existing city water-saving standards.
So that's an action, that's an action, so we need to turn that into a policy.
Fine.
Which would be review.
Review, yeah.
So say yours again, Bob?
Conduct a home inspection at the date of sale to confirm the retrofit of property to existing city water-saving standards.
Just change it to review.
Yeah.
Review at the time of sale, blah, 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 everything else.
A home inspection at the date of sale to confirm retrofit of the property to the existing city water-saving standards. Which essentially means that when you sell your house.
Well, you can, you set the policy, you can set the action, but the policy is you'd like the home reviewed at the time of sale for compliance.
Correct.
Who's paying for that, and what's the mechanism?
Don't care, it can either be the buyer or the seller, but the idea is that when the home is sold, when, when the new owner moves in.
I understand that.
The house redo is, it take, uses less water.
Are we gonna implement that? Do we implement it to the, how are we gonna work that as a city?
That goes in the implementation part.
Officer that sits in, in Danny's office that, you know, you can walk in and say, here's the, here it is, I'll be by next Tuesday, and he's gonna look at.
Ask him in Pasadena, I had to do that in Pasadena. A general, you have to have your house inspected when you sell it in Pasadena.
The city, the city.
So that would be more, can I suggest, it would be more something going back to the adopted standards. Review at the time of sale for water, adopted water conservation.
I don't want review, I want compliance.
You can't get compliance in a policy.
Right. Yeah, okay, but, but what we're looking for is that, is that.
We'll, we'll make sure to turn this into an implementation.
It'll turn into.
I was unaware that when you bought a house, you've gotta go through the city to do it, that's what I'm saying.
No, 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 in, in certain jurisdictions, you have to have a pre-inspection at sale, at sale, that tells you, you know, there's code violations.
Yep.
Not here.
Not in the city.
Not in the city.
But in our neighboring cities.
In Pasadena, you have to.
Okay, so, I'm assuming we don't have a city inspector that does that now, right, so it's just.
We have a city inspector.
But does, she's not doing that now, evidently.
No.
Not right now, no.
He's, he only works part-time, so we got, he's got a whole half a day to, you know.
No, it, it will likely turn into a full-time position.
There you go. Which is not a bad thing.
Because of the amount of properties that go for sale in the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'll be a full-time position, it'll be.
Well, can I suggest, let me ask you a question, hang on a second. Yes, so I'm just trying to sort of back into the logic.
Yeah.
If you put that under policy, yes, you're putting, depending on the amount of turnover in the city, you're putting a burden on another full-time equivalent to do the work.
Be involved.
Understood, but that means there's a whole bunch of stuff you gotta go through. If you make it an objective, you leave it loose or something that we can ease into. So I guess my question is, is it, is it a policy, cause policy means we gotta start moving down the path, or is it a, an objective, something we hope will happen? You want it to have teeth?
I do want it to have teeth. I think, I think we've kind of, we're, we're gonna have to go back and claw back some ground here, because we've already, we've already
So I don't.
Created a housing stock that uses more water than we can supply, so at some point in time, we're gonna have to start making the, the housing stock more efficient.
So I agree with Kevin, that's the first thing we've suggested tonight, that might have a tangible economic impact on the city budget. If you pass that, what I'm saying is, that's not a, a soft discussion, that's a hard discussion, I know.
Correct.
So, if we do put that in here tonight, when the council does or doesn't adopt it, they should be made aware of your ramifications, cause they're significant. It, that scares me a little bit, as an objective, it doesn't.
Council has heard this idea from me already.
I appreciate that, but if we're putting it forward as a planning commission unified, that means that we're all on board and we're all saying that we're willing to impact, take the cost that comes with it as opposed to we aspire to want to pursue that.
Okay, but I'm okay with the discussion, so let's, you know, wherever it goes, but I, I believe that it is a, it is a effective tool for the city to use to begin to curb the use of water.
And I think, to tag on to that, I don't think it's just water.
Yeah, it can be a lot of things.
So I think it's, it's not just an inspection or review for water related measures, but it can be co, co-compliance things too. You know, you've got.
That, that greenhouse, you know, the, the, the housing issues, you know? All those things can be, can be added on. I'm, I'm only putting, I'm only saying water right now, but as it, as it gets built, you can add, you can bolt on all kinds of stuff to this.
I'm saying it gives them more teeth moving forward.
It can, you can give that inspector many things to look at.
One thing with that.
Or you can give them just the one for now.
Right, and.
I mean, I think this is a really important idea and I completely agree with him on this. I think that there's incredible water efficiencies in everybody's, you know, in many, many people's houses. And this is a way, as the housing stock turns over, to, um, start really improving that. Because if we don't really make some, some changes with teeth about water use in Sierra Madre, we're never gonna get back our own water supply. Because right now, it, it has proved to be unsustainable unless we make some big changes in how we use water in the city. Big changes. Well, we won't get back there. So I think I'm, I'm, I think this is an important thing to do and I completely agree with it.
I mean, I think Ken's right, though. I mean, this is something that could have ripple ramifications as far as who does it.
What does it cost?
Well, I just.
Not a small thing, so.
It's a lot bigger picture than we're talking about.
Yes.
Cause if the burden's gonna be on the city and the city halls only open so many hours, I don't know if they're sending people out from city hall doing stuff at all those other hours, you know what I mean? So this guy's gonna inspect houses between whatever or whatever. And I know right now, that's a, that's a part-time position in the town.
Well, a code enforcement officer is, but it will, it will require an inspector.
This is gonna be a full-time.
It would, it would have.
Yeah, it seems to me, Bob, this is, I mean, I'm just trying to.
There would be a Fiat.
Without kinda going down a rat hole, I mean, this is a higher level issue, which is, well, I'm just, you know, and I don't know where it belongs, but basically what you're saying is at the time of turnover, all wrong should be righted. I mean, that's kind of what you're saying. So, and for that to happen, to Kevin's point, someone's gonna have to inspect at the local level. And I don't know if that is a sustain, I mean, I think it's an interesting point, but I don't know that, because now we're gonna have to put it in each of these things and then it's gonna be debated as a policy. It's a big deal.
It is a big deal, but at, at, at some point in time.
Can we let Danny try to find the appropriate place to frame it at a global levels and objective?
Sure, but I, I, I think the discussion, I think, I'd like to see the discussion move forward because I don't, I don't.
Well, I think it will, but I wanna call it out to the council not as like something we buried in one of a bazillion objectives, but there's a big idea here in this general plan. And the big idea in this general plan is when the home turns over, we want a local inspection to bring it into all of these areas of compliance. And yes, there'll be a cost associated with it. And yes, that cost will be captured as part of the transaction. That's a pretty big idea that I think needs to be called out and discussed, not kind of buried in.
Well, I mean, there's water, we talk about water fees, water, so, but, but when we're done with this, it's, this is going to the city council and they can just as easily redline things out as we put in, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, but I think we should have a unified point of view and it should be framed in the right part of the document, not buried in a sub-bullet of one little section.
If we were to sort of pull it out.
I mean, it's a very big idea.
And you were gonna put it globally, what, I mean.
Well, we really have to think about it because, you know, I think originally Commissioner Spears was, was focusing on the sustainability.
Correct.
But I think, you know, now it's, now it's a little broader, if we were to include other things.
Well, if you're sending the inspector in.
I'm only putting water in, I'm, I'm only doing it for.
For water, right.
And I, and I, do I understand that this is a project, program that can grow over time? Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating, I am, I know that, you know, as commissioner, I could, I could increase it at this point, but right now, I'm just wanna make sure that.
You're fitting it in here.
I'm fitting it in here because it has water specific applicability. And there could be other language in other parts of this to talk about, you know, housing or whatever, you know, and however you wanna put it. So you can, you know, you can cut it up that way. So all I'm saying is, can we ensure that when a house is sold in Sierra Madre, that, that when the new owner takes place, that it is the most efficient house in terms of using water as possible?
I mean, I can tell you, tell the entire commission, that it is on a future agenda of the city council. They are, it's, it's already agendized. I'm not sure, October or early November, but I know it's already agendized.
Issue?
This issue about, um, inspect, pre-inspection. About, um, upon sale of property, that a property inspection be conducted and that program would have to be hashed out. For all, I'm sorry, for.
What would it cover?
What would it cover? It hasn't been established yet. It, it, it's gonna, the council's gonna direct us to do that, we'll give some ideas and then it's gonna come to the planning commission and full discussion.
So they're already talking about it as a greater than just water conservation.
Right, not only that.
Leaning forward on this one.
Yeah, I hear it. And so what I say is I wouldn't bury it in this one little point. I'd bring it up at the higher level cause it's gonna have, those two points of view are gonna have to meet in the middle, cause there's budgetary implication, right?
See, my thing, I, I, I see where you're going with this, but I also feel like it's inevitable that it would become global and not just on water.
It's gonna have to if you're gonna have a cost.
If you're gonna send an inspector to do a pre-inspection on a buy-sell, you're not gonna just more likely send him out to just look at the water.
Do I think eventually that'll get that? Absolutely, but right now, I'm, I'm only dealing with.
I don't even think eventually, I think right off the bat, if we put in an inspection program.
And that will be a city council decision. All I'm doing is putting in some verbiage here that says, okay, this is something we aspire towards and that we should, we should, we should lean, lean towards.
Well, do we wanna just put it in here as a consider? And we have this consider a water impact fee, consider an inspection at sale of houses.
That would work as a policy.
As a policy. Consider a, a, a water, a, an inspection of houses or a.
Upon sale of property.
Yeah, consider inspection upon sale of property to ensure that all water conservation measures are met.
You know who we're gonna hear from on this is the realtors of town?
Yeah, but.
Because, I mean, and a lot of.
They drink water.
There's a lot of houses in this town that have sold, that it was, they did the correct inspection, said, oh, you gotta redo this, this and this. They might, the house might not ever be sold, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, that happens. I think the houses in Sierra Madre are valuable enough so that the cost of a toilet is not going to, to override that one point five million dollar sale.
I'm not just talking about, we're not just talking about the toilet and the water there.
We're talking about other non-compliance.
Full compliance with everything in a house.
I like whoever's suggestion it was, it's a policy, I think that's good. Put it, consider, just like you consider a water impact fee.
Yes.
So read your thing again, put the word consider in front of it.
Consider the establishment of a, of a home inspection po, uh, program on the date of sale to confirm that the retrofit of property, retrofit of the property to existing city water saving standards.
Yes, perfect. Leave that in.
Consider the establishment of a home inspection program upon sale of property to confirm the retrofit, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is this only for homes or is it for any property? I think it should take out home and just say an inspection.
This would be, because it's under the residential low density, so it is under R one, but it's gonna repeat.
Yeah.
We'll call it that.
By the time we pass the general plan, it might be moot. We may have already considered it.
It may, it may, you're right, it may beat the general plan to the, to the printer, so, but I think it's an accum, I think it'll be an accumulative.
Name the policy if possible.
Oh, just so we, in the future, we can.
L, is that L eight point six?
It is L eight point six.
Or, or also known as a Spears policy.
Spears policy.
No, the Spears inspection. It's the Spears inspection.
I don't remember that, cause it might apply to other sections.
Okay, all right.
Fine.
That, that way people can say, I'm sorry, did you get your Spears?
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm, I am gonna use my authority here. Let's move, keep going here.
Okay. Twenty-four, no changes.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-five there are. And, and remember, we're, we're now under the canyon zone, canyon area, residential canyon. L twelve point three, conduct a historic resources survey to encourage retention of existing older homes. And I, we changed that was encourage the retention of.
Existing.
Existing older homes where there are conservation benefits. So we could change that to that. And then, um, provide incentives for property owners to retrofit historically designated homes with water saving fixtures. That's again a repeat, no change. And, um, also in the canyon zone, objective L, bottom of page, L fourteen. Encouraging sustainability. And again, repeated the language.
Of all the others.
But it would match, it would match the same as we did in R one.
Right.
Okay.
Okay? To match. Okay. Can I move forward?
Yep.
Okay. I, I know the numbering is weird, we're back to page one again, but it's residential, low-density hillside. No changes on page one. On page two, we again, oh no, page three, we have an encouraging sustainability objective.
I have a, I have something on page two.
Okay.
Which is under these, this is hillside, right?
Uh huh, yes.
Under L fifteen point two. Require that homes be planned, developed and designed to, and I would add an F, which is use the minimum amount of water possible for landscaping and interior uses.
Repeat that again, use?
Use the minimum amount of water possible.
Object to page two.
For landscaping and interior uses.
For landscaping and interior uses?
Or whatever word you want.
What do you mean by interior, like bathrooms and stuff, like sinks?
Yeah, or I mean, both outside and inside. Just be designed to use the minimum amount of water possible. But I think it's important to call out landscaping and inside.
And we, you're good with making it an F?
So going back to the Spears policy then, seriously, would that mean that if a house were sold and all the toilets didn't have low flush, that they would have to pull out all the toilets and put in low-flush toilets before that transaction could occur?
Well, actually, if the, if the, if the toilets, whatever the appliances are in the house have to match, what it, what it would be is if they came to Danny with, and I need a building permit.
Today.
Today. So.
So if I wanna build a home today, all the toilets have to be low flush, right?
Correct.
So if I have a home that's twenty-five years old and two of the house toilets are low flush and two are not, and I sell the house to somebody else, then they get a letter that says, before this transaction occurs, we need evidence that those toilets have been changed.
Correct.
I agree with Kevin. I think realtors' heads are gonna explode.
Bring it on.
In other words, if you have a promise that it will be done, I think that's fine.
We'll invite the realtors to that public hearing.
Ah?
We'll, we'll probably send it, seriously, we'll.
Well, I'm just saying, you're putting an awful burden on the transaction at that point.
I think, and.
It's not unprecedented, I mean, it's done in other places.
I'm just saying, I'm just thinking through what you were saying.
I'm, I'm, I had to do that. I had to spend thousands of dollars to repair this.
Today to build a garage, you'd have to put a fire sprinkler system in.
Correct. If you, if you modified it more than fifty percent, yes? Or, yeah.
If you don't have one now, if it doesn't have one now, does that mean they have to put one in before?
No, I think it's the things that are out of compliance or.
I think it's water saving. The fire sprinklers are under, are under UBC, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a fire life saving.
Yeah, but if you have to do all of that work before the transaction can complete, you're gonna kill, I mean, that, that's, that's a showstopper. I mean, you can say, yes, it has to be done within a year or some such thing, but if you're saying you, all the work has to be done before that house can be sold, I mean, that's a huge burden on that transaction.
Well, maybe something.
They sell houses in Pasadena.
I, yeah, I mean, I had to do it and that's just how it was.
But there is also clauses in that where, depending on the.
Well, we have a consider, so now we know what consider means, it has to be debated.
You can accept it as is.
Yeah, no, Gina, it wasn't just the toilets.
You don't have to, see, that's the other, that's the buyout clause in that, right?
Okay, whatever, but, but, but at, at some point in time.
As the buyer, even though it has these. We will likely be studying Pasadena ordinance.
Talking about.
No, I'm saying. We'll bring that to you.
Yeah.
In other jurisdictions where they have this inspection.
Yeah.
Let's say there's a litany of items, let's say, you know, the garage has got an extra bedroom in it and, you know, it's not to code. Well, you get all that information, but it does not mean that the seller has to then remedy that prior to the sale. The buyer can accept that as, as an as-is, as condition.
So what are the teeth to enforce a policy?
In that case, they, that's how, that's how the sale can go on.
But what are the teeth to enforce the policy? How do you get the toilets changed?
Then you gotta send an inspector out three times, make the, make sure.
That's why that is different than what, what occurs at, you know, nearby jurisdictions. Where it's an inspection given, but that, it's not a something saying it has to be remedied.
But if you had a good realtor, they'd be out there changing on toilets.
It's a disclosure. It's a disclosure. It's not a sort of a writ to fix kinda thing.
But it will, but if you are buying a house and you're negotiating with a seller and you get this information that says, by the way, the, the house has all these issues, it's gonna affect the sale of the house. So you can, you can say, well, I'm gonna fix these issues. I'll, you know, for, a toilet costs what, a hundred and twenty-five bucks, no problem. Cause I'm not gonna use a hundred and twenty-five dollars to stop a one point five million dollar sale.
But, but you, you would have the privilege to say, we're not gonna fix it and.
And I'll take the hit and I'll, then I'll negotiate with you about what the cost is. Yeah, I'm.
So there, there goes the teeth, though, right?
Well, I'm saying, I'm just trying to understand the concept. The concept is,
if, if the only teeth the city has to stop, to, to, to ensure that the policy is met is to stop the transaction, then I think you've got a pretty burdensome policy. If the issue is, if the issue is, you can pass the cost along to me or you pass the to-do list along to me to give me a period of time to remedy, I think that's fine, but then I go back to the, well, if I take that, I sell the house and I throw it away, I never do anything.
Well, we've already put it in as consider, so let's.
Well, I just wanted to get on the record what it actually meant, cause when I thought about what it meant, based on what you just said here, I wanna understand what we're actually forcing people to do versus what we're not and how we're gonna bring it into compliance.
I think at the end of the day, the city council's gonna decide what it means and what they're willing to live with in terms of enforcement. But I think that, I would like to see us to be, to put out that idea so that it begins to gather weight and, and, and impetus so that we can begin to address the fact that there are a lot of houses out there that, you know, could use less water but have no, have no encouragement other than, you know, the fact that, you know, the, the water bill to, you know, to, to do that. But some people in this town are, you know, have enough money and says, well, I'll just pay the additional bill and away they go. And it, and while that serves their interests very well, it does not serve the city as a whole very well, because they could consume less without a lot of effort.
Yeah, I wasn't focused, I'm focused on that issue. I'm focused on the issue of obstructing the transaction, which is to say, I agree with you philosophically, that's a good time to get the toilets replaced. I don't wanna stop the transaction before they get replaced, because I think that does, that's a, that's a pretty big burden on a transaction.
And I'd be willing to live with whatever the city council in their infinite wisdom decide that they can stomach.
Yeah, that may be something like what you're saying up here.
There'll be a big discussion.
I'm sure, I'm sure someone will have a comment, yes.
You'll have a discussion too. It's gonna come before you.
Well, but I sort of agree with Ken because it'll also be later on hardly defined who's gonna pay for that, you know, cause transactions for term. Well, I wouldn't shug my shoulders, I would make it concrete, because then, then the discussion would be like, okay, if people know what the cost is gonna be, then someone's gonna, you know.
Yeah, if I find there's dry rot in the house and as Manish says, I wanna accept it as is, knowing that it's gonna be my cost to fix it, that's fine. Everything's disclosed, but what you're saying is this transaction's not going down if the water's not, requirement's not met. That's a different deal. Cause I can't assume that burden if you're not gonna allow me to assume that, assume that burden.
It's beyond a disclosure.
Thank you. Okay.
So in this section, this section is objective L fifteen, minimize hazards in the hillside. So what I'm putting in is a thing here about, about, um, reducing water use. Maybe that doesn't belong here, but I think overuse of water could be considered a hazard, actually, not having enough water, because.
You mean the, the F that you put in?
Yeah, maybe it doesn't go in this spot, but it was a spot to put it, because I thought it kinda belonged in how it should be planned, developed and designed to do these things. So that, that, I mean, maybe needs to be moved someplace else, but I think it should, it kinda goes with that list of things.
Well, I mean, I, I think it goes with the list, but it's a, it seems a little bit of a stretch to, for it to be, I mean, the hazard in the hillside, it doesn't seem to fit, but it does fit with the list. Like when a home site is planned or developed or designed, it should consider A to.
Right.
Z, you know.
Maybe this belongs someplace else in this hillside area and in other places, but.
Could it, could it fit under encouraging sustainability?
In this section?
No, uh, yeah.
And in general.
Well, in L seventeen, you could just put that.
Each section has, each land use.
I mean, I sort of think maybe, maybe that's something we want to put under encourage sustainability. It's kind of the, it's kind of the overall idea of what this stuff is saying, you know?
Well, Danny, isn't L seventeen basically the reprint, you know, that, that we're doing? So we would add this to, I mean, I think this is really talking about when you design, so this is proactive. When you design a home site, whether it's a major addition, remodel, a new dwelling, that you consider this, or do we have something like that covered in here? Cause that's what you're really getting at.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It's right, it's right there is what it belongs.
It's not a hazard, though.
Exactly a hazard thing. I think it more, more belongs under sustainability maybe.
Well, if, if you look at L eight point one, it's incorporate water conservation measures in the zoning development standards. For that's for new construction and substantial remodeling, remodeling or building expansion as it relates to green building construction.
Yeah, I mean, this is just.
As it relates to, but not limited, like, including but not limited to green buildings, construction.
I mean, this is just sort of a cut to the, cut to the chase statement of what that's saying, right? Whenever you're designing, you need to consider, you know, build things to, to use the minimum water. That's what we're trying to get at, right? It's kind of, it's kind of a.
It's a message to all the architects.
Yeah, it's kind of a more straightforward message about design.
It's a different audience, that's the thing. Like L eight one is talking about what the city would do internally. It's a different audience, that's the thing. Like, L eight-one is talking about what the city would do internally, right? Like, we wanna have conservation measures in all of our tools, right? From our zoning to our this, that, and the other thing, you know, but this one's really saying, it's ki- it's talking to a different audience, but it's saying the same thing. So that's my only thing, is like, how you, how do you put that in there and differentiate it from eight-point-one?
Right. I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, can we just write this and put it in as a placekeeper and think about where it might go? Which is, we require that homesites be planned, developed, and designed to use the minimum amount of water possible for landscaping and interior uses, and then see if we can, if that goes somewhere in here.
I'm circling it square, yeah.
Yeah, and just see if, if there's kind of a design-
Only because this applies not only to the hillside, but-
To everywhere, yeah. Because I think that's something we wanna, that's a really important thing to get across.
Unless you want this to be under the, like, a summary of land use goal, a summary of land use goals.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that was at the beginning?
That could be an overarching.
Yeah, maybe. I don't wanna scroll all the way back up there, but take a look and see if it's there.
Yeah, would you like us to just, well, I mean, we'll circle it, we won't forget it, we'll, we'll place it somewhere.
Yeah.
Bring it back to you.
I trust you to put it in, but I think it should be in here about the, this plan development design.
Do we have anywhere, language where, I know we had like the overarching sustainability, where we were talking about material conservation, and in the sense of when designing a home,
Yeah.
consider, you know, sustainable, sustainable material use, water conservation.
It's really sprinkled throughout. It's sprinkled throughout the entire document.
Okay, there's no, all right.
You know, either we can find a way to put it in the encouraging sustainability section in each one, so, so that it differentiates from what's already there, you know?
Or it could be an overarching thing, I think.
Right.
I don't really care, but I think-
Well, if it goes in the land use, like, as a goal or whatever, I think it needs to be more encompassing of not just the water element, but it's talking about when you embark on designing a home or site.
Resources, period.
Resources, you know, material use, things like that, you know, all those green kind of things, but also the water. I don't know.
Okay.
They need to be expanded a little bit, because I think that, that's, the goal is more than just, make sure you got, you know, water conserving fixtures.
Um, can we move forward?
Yes, please.
Page three, there you go again. It's Objective L seventeen. This is again a repeat, but with, as amended, as we discussed this evening. L eight-point-one, L eight-point-two, L eight-point-three, and L eight-point-four. Again, as amended, as previously talked.
So, I'm a little lost here. Objective L seventeen, all that objective is crossed out?
No, uh, yeah.
Except encourage sustainability.
But that's not an objective. That's just a header.
No, it is. It's an objective.
That's it?
And then it's got all these things underneath it.
And it's got the, the five things that we, we put in others.
I should say this cross-out was only used to, I don't know why.
That's not, I mean, following the form, I mean, you look at Objective L sixteen, it's not, it's an objective. This says encouraging sustainability is an objective. I'm not, and then if you go down below to the next page, you've got Objective L seventeen providing for, I don't get what's going on.
Well, the, the, again, the numbering needs to change.
And is that, so is that L seventeen?
You have another L seventeen at the, on the next page?
Yes. That's now eighteen.
Okay, so what is the objec-? Because every, that, the, that's out of, that's not following the form of the document. Encouraging sustainability is two words.
We have that elsewhere. If you go to-
I know, we have it, I have it, I have it, my note, L nineteen, L twenty, we have it three times, but it's the only playtime we do that. Every other one, we stayed in objective.
Well, even moving up-
Well, I mean, there's, look at L fifteen, minimizing hazards in the hillside. That's an objective. It's a short objective. This is like the same kind of thing, maximizing sustainability.
Do you want that expanded?
I, I just, doesn't make any sense to me when I look at the Objective fourteen, is an objective. Objective, uh-
No, look at, uh, Objective L fourteen, says encouraging sustainability.
Yeah, that-
All right, look at Objective L fifteen.
If you guys are happy with it, I'm fine.
No, we're not, we're not.
I think it's not logical, but that's just me.
But what, what would?
I don't think it's consistent. I don't know, because I don't know what we're trying to say there.
We're trying to encourage sustainability.
It looks like they add the encouraged sustainability as the final objectives in each of the-
Land use.
Land use sections, residential, low, medium, and high. And so what they did is they just tacked on the same-
Right.
They cut and pasted-
They did.
For each one of those. So the discussion we just had, we're gonna have four more times.
But did, oh, the question is, though, did encouraged sustainability, the objective, exist before?
It did.
It did. We had it that way.
We did.
Okay, so this is nothing, this is nothing new in terms of, at each section we added.
You know, in fact, it may have been, surprisingly, it was in some of them and not in all of them. So we, we decided to put encouraging sustainability in all land use types.
Yeah, because you had in L eight, which is actually under the first, the low-density-
Because it gave us the ability to include water conservation policies in each one.
In there, yeah. Ken?
If everybody else is happy, I'm fine.
I'm not happy, because you're not happy.
I don't understand it, but there's enough people who do that we can move on.
Okay, I, I'm gonna venture to move to page four, and then, um, no changes on four. Page five, again, this is a repeat, because we're now-
I'm sorry, Danny, if, if I may, and this is something that we've talked about, just going back to the encourage sustainability. When we, when we use encourage, you're basically, you're not requiring something, you're encouraging. And perhaps you wanna keep that in mind, because af- in the first policy after encourage is to actually incorporate water conservation measures in the zoning development. These things will become requirements. So when you're saying encourage, encourage typically is associated with incentives. How do you encourage someone to do it without requiring it? So really, you have to provide some-
Which is why I was asking for some, to me, it sounds like a slogan.
Perhaps you wanna say promote, or perhaps there's a different language where you can then draw-
Have more background.
Actually require something.
How about incorporate, how about incorporate sustainability into?
Um, incorporation of sustainability, sustainable practices or sustainable measures.
Principles or sustainable practices. How about that?
Incorporate, sustainable measures.
Sustainability measures, I don't know.
Or perhaps incorporate measures to promote sustainability.
There you go.
So we're gonna repeat that throughout, then?
I think it better than encouraging sustainability.
Ken's happy.
I know what it is.
Okay.
Thank you, LaCecia.
Because we, we kind of struggle with that throughout the document where-
You'll find, you'll find in the next-
There'll be others.
Get to the next report.
If.
That's fine, Ken. I'll see how you guys feel. Chair, you have the prerogative to do what you wanna do.
All right. No, that's good, though, because that, there's a discrepancy there. I thought, that's good.
Okay, uh, okay, great.
Where are we?
Again, it's, we're going to page five. We're, we're now in, we're now in the R M zone, R M.
On page, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, residential, medium density, which is the R two. Uh, and Objective L nineteen, we've, again, it's a repeat.
Except for you added one other thing, nineteen-point-seven.
Yes, you are. Uh, and I'll read it. L nineteen-point-seven was added, and this was because it's, it's also a water policy objective that the council and planning commission reviewed. Consider requiring individual meters for each dwelling unit for new construction for the purpose of tracking water usage per unit.
So, at the risk of rehashing an old, what's a dwelling unit?
A dwelling unit is a-
How many are, how many dwelling units are across the street at the Kensington?
Ninety-five. No.
And, but that was, that was the debate, correct? What, in other words, whether, what, how, how do you parse that?
Well-
Well, this is the R two.
This is R two, so it's pretty straightforward.
There's two.
So there.
But it's gonna, but it's gonna occur-
All right, that's fine. Okay, good.
No, but to that point, it's gonna occur again in, when we get in R three, right, so?
Right, right.
I'm sorry, I wasn't in that part of the conversation. What, don't, I thought we do have individual meters, do we not?
Not in multiple dwelling units.
Not in multiple dwellings.
Not in apartment buildings.
You have one for the building?
Correct.
Yes.
And so what, the manager, the owner of the building pays the water bill?
Well, they divvy it up, or they do whatever they want, whatever they wanna put in.
There's a bill that goes to the building owner.
There's one, yeah.
And they decide how to put that in the rep.
Even in R two, I think that there's just one.
Yeah, in many cases, there's just one.
Is it feasible to retrofit a building with multiple units?
Feasible, yes.
How do you?
It's better to do it under construction, but it is feasible, but this is one of the points of conservation.
You have to have separate lines.
If you have a whole apartment house, how do you encourage conservation? Because-
You can have a-
I'm just trying to understand the concept.
Subbed out.
Are you suggesting in this concept a mandated retrofit, or are you suggesting for new construction?
I would say new construction. I think that-
It says new construction.
Yeah.
It says new construction.
It says new construction.
Oh, for new construction, okay, I see that. And just to hear the other side of the argument, why wouldn't you do it for new construction? Why would someone not want to do it?
They don't wanna bother.
It's more expensive to put in-
It's inconvenient.
Inconvenient to whom?
The person doing the construction, because you have to run them-
Would it cost more?
You have to run a separate pipe back down to a source.
Um, if I'm developing a project-
There's a cost to the developer.
Yeah.
A multi-unit project.
Probably, it's a cost to have one meter versus-
Yeah, it's, it's a cost per meter.
I'll tell you another thing.
I'm just trying to understand the concept and I have a point of view.
I'll tell you what it means. It means, if you want to tear down a single house now-
Yeah.
And build an apartment building there-
Yeah.
With, you could do it, but if it required separate meters, you could not do it, because of the moratorium.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
That's what it means.
But today, you couldn't do that today anyway, with the moratorium.
Well, no, if you had only one meter, and you wanted to tear down a house and have one meter for an apartment building, you could do that, because it's not adding a meter.
Oh, interesting.
Because it's all about a new meter, so if we change it-
You're only gonna get a half-inch water meter, and you're gonna have to pick a number when you're gonna take a shower.
But I mean, if you want to-
I'm just going back to, you said you tore, tore down, tore down a single family home, put up an apartment, it'd have to be zoned for both.
R three.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Which is plausible.
We approved one at the last meeting.
Yeah.
On, um, Laurel.
Laurel, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That could have one meter for both, for all three of those residences.
Okay, so this just says consider, so why is this a bad idea to have this here?
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Why, why would it be? It just says consider. That's all we're saying is consider. Well, you said it might be controversial.
Well, because we had a long discussion about what is a dwelling unit, and how it was defined. And it became a, an emotional issue. So, you know, I, I'm just wanna make sure that we, we, we can, when they ask about what a dwelling unit is, that we can, we have an answer.
So not having you part of that conversation, if we had nine apartment units in an apartment, would each of the nine apartments be a dwelling unit?
Yes.
Okay, so then this concept, there would be nine water meters for that building. We were, we're talking about considering that as a requirement.
Correct.
I'm fine with considering it.
Danny, just to, but just to clarify, we didn't really, for the Kensington, make a decision. We sidestepped it by making a special zone, right?
You-
We never really, we didn't change the definition of dwelling unit, so we never got around. We let the city vote on whether they wanted this thing, and then we put it in a special zone, so it sidestepped whether it was a dwelling unit.
Well, you created, you created an exception for the Kensington.
Correct, but it-
By, by way of the vote.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that another development is gonna hap- it's gonna require that we decide whether they are or not, because if another ninety-five, I mean, God, I don't know where it would go, but, you know-
Or it gets zoned, rezoned, you know? We'll see.
But would we be able to do that if we made this require as, well, if the consider became, uh, an implementation? Okay, well, then they'll have to worry about that when they try and implement, okay.
So, to your point, then dwelling unit is still not a legally defined term.
It is legally.
It's legally defined. It's in, it's in our zoning code.
It's even in Measure V.
It's in Measure V.
And that was the problem.
Yeah. It's in Measure V, and it wasn't found to be ambiguous.
All right, let's keep, I think we all like it.
My question on that, so, this basically for the discussion of limiting water to somebody, that's why we put it into a nine-unit apartment complex, right? That's gonna increase the cost to the, per person, unless, unless the owner, the property's paying for it, right? But you got a meter charge in each one of those.
Could be, could, could reduce your charge, because the, the owner may decide, well, I'm gonna charge each one of you X amount of money for water.
What I'm saying is that, basically, the city's making more money out of this, or the water apartments, because they're, now they have nine meters, and they're getting charged for one before.
Where there's certain-
The meter charge on mine is a pretty good, pretty good chunk of what the bill was.
I don't know about that, but it's the only way we have of holding each unit accountable for the amount of water they use.
What I'm saying is, let's re- really get down to the point of, wait a minute, we're gonna hold each, the individual apartment?
Or condominium?
Or condominium, or townhouse? Because-
I gotta see, I can see an condominium, a townhouse, because it's different than an apartment.
Yeah, I think, I think right now is, is that, you know, when, when, when Bruce does his, you know, survey of water usage, we, we can't determine who, who on, on a multifamily property is, is an abuser of, you know, a water abuser, you know, and everyone else has to kind of fall victim to that, because they're all in one development.
It's either entire property or-
Entire property, and, and this is a way of tracking, you know, water, water, water usage per unit.
And they're putting in these new condos over here, huh?
Mariposa?
Mariposa.
Yeah, are those, do those each have?
No, it's, it's one water.
Okay, so if I get up in the morning and turn on my shower and go to work and come home ten hours later, that bill just gets passed along to the other people living in the building? You just takes the building and divides by the number of people living there?
Correct, yes.
Seems specious.
That's how it works, yeah.
I understand what a condo.
So you're moving into a building, you, you're a building owner, or you're, sorry, you're moving into a homeowners association, where the homeowners association's gonna parse the water bill, but you have no control over what your share of one over X of that is, because you can't, you can't do anything about what your neighbor does.
Correct.
Right.
The same thing in an apartment.
Very tough thing to sign up for.
The same thing in an apartment building.
When water is costing what it costs now.
Same thing in an apartment building, you know? You could have someone who takes, you know, an hour shower, and you're in there-
Or half them a whole lot of times.
Yeah, or you're in there taking a one-minute shower, and you're paying for their, you know, paying for-
Okay, let's, let's, uh, move on forward here.
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna leave page six, go to page seven, no changes. And again, page eight, and this is under residential, medium, high density. This is straightforward, R three.
Same seven.
Same seven, uh, and, you know, as amended, though, on, on, on a couple of them.
Yes.
And this has individual.
And this one has the same thing, too.
One now.
I don't know why the individuals wouldn't demand their own meter.
No. Um-
Not a new concept.
So, page nine, um, page ten, no change. Page eleven, again, a repeat, under the, um, what was our new objective title again? I forgot.
LaCecia has it.
Promote sustainability, and that is- And this is the residential interpreneur area.
It's, it's an overlay, though, right?
It is the, yeah, it's the combined overlay, so it's, it's kind of jets out from, like on Sierra Madre Boulevard, to the east and west.
But is it, is it primarily over, like, multifamily zones, R twos, R threes? Okay, so it doesn't apply, you don't overlay it over, like, a single family?
No, although there are some single family in the residential interpreneur that's an overlay. Okay, I'm leaving this now.
Just because the metering thing probably wouldn't apply there, right?
Right. Um, page one of the commercial section, nothing. Page two, nothing. Page three-
Yeah, page one, you have a mark up there.
Do I?
Yeah, twenty-six-two.
Oh, no, that, that's, that's, that, that was-
That's just an old headline, okay, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, I know that, you know, you might not see the shade. Page two, page three, nothing. Page four, yes.
Oh, there I see it.
Um, L thirty-one, L thirty-one, conservation of the city's water resources. Uh, L eight-point-one, incorporate water conservation measures in the zoning development standards for new construction and substantial remodeling or building expansion as it relates to green building construction percentage of per, and I think we need to put here, including but not limited to.
Yes.
And then, um, again, a water impact fee that would apply to commercial as well.
Oh boy.
I have something back at L twenty-eight point eight.
We can't go back.
On, okay.
Uh, require that landscaping, it's, it's about landscaping, be designed with form and function in mind that plants be low maintenance as well as attractive and drought tolerant to use the minimum possible amount of water.
Yes.
L twenty-eight point eight.
And drought tolerant.
To use the minimum.
To use the minimum amount of water?
Minimum amount of water.
What does minimum mean?
Minimum means the least possible, minimum.
Minimum would be zero.
No, the minimum amount of water, that they can stay alive, change the word if you want, I don't give a darn.
Well, it's, it's a.
You don't like it, you can change it, I don't care, you know what I'm getting at, we want them to use the least amount of water possible.
The least amount of water possible is to have nothing out there and they don't have to water anything, I don't. What's minimum, minimum is zero.
We want, we want plants to, we want them to plant plants that use less water than other plants use, okay, you can, I don't care.
I think there, there is a standard for that.
Wordsmith it anyway.
Yeah, there is a standard for that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think it's an understood, like, drought tolerant, native, low.
I like that.
Okay, are we good with that language?
I think so.
I already went over page four.
So, just, I hate to, is L eight point three, the Spears Amendment, is that gonna apply?
Yes.
We would add L eight point three here, yeah.
Tip of the spear.
I'm, I'm putting here Spears.
Yeah, okay, fine, whatever.
Okay, we'll carry that over.
All right.
Page five, no changes, tell me if I'm going too fast, but. Page six, no changes. Page seven, again, adding on, um, the same language.
Under Objective thirty-one, L thirty-one?
Yeah, and that is under the artisan mixed use, that's a manufacturing zone, so it would apply there as well.
Wait, artisan mixed use, okay.
Yeah, okay. And then the entire central core area, which is Measure V, beginning at the bottom of page seven, and then as it goes to, all the way to page.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, no changes at all, because we can't do any changes, we'd have to go to a vote of the people. Okay.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, so let's, if we can go all the way to page twenty-five, starting in institutional.
Okay.
We, no page, no change on twenty-six. We added on page twenty-seven, we added G at the end. Incorporates water conservation practices such as but not limited to gray water plumbing, so it's basically the same thing, we were able to catch the such as but not limited to.
Yeah, but this is for institutional, right?
This is for institutional.
L thirty-five point two?
Right, it's just, it's saying allowing for the expansion, so it just, it covers, um, those existing institutional where, um, where you would, where there would be expansion.
Note here somewhere.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. On the middle of page twenty-seven, we struck L thirty-five point four.
What do you mean?
Allow for the reuse.
I'm gonna read it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Allow for the reuse of large institutional properties over twenty acres, recognizing that such parcels in urban areas are unique and shall be considered eligible for future conversion to other uses, including but not limited to public recreational facilities and low-density housing, subject to appropriate regulatory and zoning processes.
And why did you take this out?
No, I just struck that.
We struck it, we, we struck it because we felt that it doesn't meet the objectives of water conservation, additional, you know, going back to the land use, um, concerns of land use and water conservation at the, at the, at the preface of.
But you added it and then struck it out, is that what?
It was, it was an existing policy.
But there is some language about reusing institutional property in here, somewhere, I remember reading it.
What's the specific, what would be an example?
Look at L thirty-five point two.
The monastery.
Allow for expansion.
Allow for the reuse.
Oh, no, it was about schools, I think.
Yeah, that's about schools, this one is specifically that says that for institutional, large institutional properties, like the Mater De La Roser.
Encouraging them to be, become housing, really.
That's what this says.
I think that's good to strike it.
So.
We struck it.
Just for a point of clarification, in our next document, that is not struck.
We need to strike it, it wasn't because, just because it was. Yeah, none of the water conservation.
Made it to this.
Amendments made it to the.
That was like the base document before you added.
Right, and it was really to be used as, as a reference, so we actually need to take, we still need to, if you agree to these implement, uh, water policies.
You have to put them back.
We've gotta put them back into these implementations, we're gonna have to revisit that, we just.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is, you know, okay, we're fine.
Can I?
It's our job.
What are meetings for?
Going back to this thirty-five four that you struck, I understand the low-density housing, but why wouldn't you want them reused for public recreation?
It's already in here. I think.
It's on thirty-five, what is that, three now, right above?
What does it say?
Allow the reuse of existing institutional properties as appropriate for the following uses, relocation, retreat center, civic use, or others such uses.
Ark, oh, there, I got it.
Arkland open space, public.
Okay.
Yeah, which there aren't.
Yeah, I think, I think this is good to.
Good to strike.
To strike.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it was right, I remember reading that.
Yeah. So that's, okay, can we move forward?
Yes.
No change on the next page, twenty-nine, no changes, now we're in section two historic preservation, no pa, no change on these two pages, thirty, thirty and thirty-one, thirty-two, no changes.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, we had the change at the top of the page, number six, the retention of existing historic homes and structures, limit redevelopment and reconstruction that would otherwise maximize building flora, creating a greater demand on the city's water resources and its ability to serve its customers. So we included it as a preservation benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No changes in the rest of the page. Thirty-four, nothing, thirty-five, nothing, it's all the same, thirty-six, no, thirty-seven, no.
And everything else is the line out.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, yeah, and that's because we.
Right, you had to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're on to our second half?
We're on to the second half.
How do you want, in light of the fact that there's gonna have to be working in what we just went through?
Yeah, I mean, you.
What you're feeling?
We will, we will stay here if you'd like to do this tonight, um, but I hear you, we, we can add in the water policies as implementation and, and bring this back to you at the next, at your next general plan meeting. I, I will say this, this, you can really get into this, maybe.
I mean, the table, it's this table five point one that you've set up, right, I mean, it's several pages of it.
Right, and what we've, what we've done is we've drafted the entire implementation program for land use. It, it is, it is quite telling of, you know, what we would be, how we would take, take these and lift them off the page and actually implement them, so.
What's, what's the consensus, do you wanna?
I think we should just plow ahead and do what we can.
I do too, it's not gonna go away.
Bring it back to us.
We could take a break and then come back to it if you want, and everybody, you know.
How do you get through?
We've only got eighty, or eighty-nine pages to go.
Well, we can get through, it'd be part of it, anyway.
Well, actually, the, I don't know, the, the table might need a lot of, might not have a lot of discussion, but there's, there weren't a lot of points in there that I.
Yeah, there didn't seem a lot in this one.
I didn't, I didn't have a long list, so.
Yeah, me neither, okay.
Okay, why don't we take a five-minute break and then reconvene and plow through it?
Okay.
Okay.
Water, a power grid, where, where, where is it that we have?
Yeah, you really think that's, you really think that's a possibility of happening?
Sure.
No. Water rights. The Environmental Protection Act. Yes, because the state of Seattle does not like the, the state of.
The state of Washington?
Yes, they do not like the state of California. Yeah, right. That is never gonna happen. No, not when it comes to water.
Did they take it out of the? Yes, they did, it was low-density, high-density, and institution. I believe so, yes. Okay. We're only, we're only the first in many steps, you know, so.
Oh, but I know the other steps are.
Council will know. Yeah, yeah. Should be per nostril. Yeah.
Is that this exciting ride?
Yeah. Interesting.
Are you still awake?
Yeah. It's a job as we choose, huh? Yeah. Do you go to lot, do you go to other cities?
Oh, yeah, I just, I look at this.
Yeah, but not, not, just for litigation stuff, not really for this kind of meeting, it's kind of rare when I do this, but it's good to, it's good to do it.
Yeah.
Stay sharp.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no, I'm, so far, I'm.
Did, did you do that, you know, the.
Yeah. Roller and, I don't know. You know, growing old is not for everybody.
Yeah, when I was, when I was thirty-two, I had an older patient, he walks in, oh, good, I go, a young doctor, I go, and I was surprised, because I, you know, I figured they, they, young guys don't know anything, he goes, no, no, you won't die on me like my last few doctors, I am looking, and so I said, well, no offense, but I, I hope I do.
For me now, all medical procedures are like going to the Apple Store, everyone is twelve, it's like, what the hell is going on, and then, the, the, all instructions are like, you know, a Zen Buddhist on Twitter, you know, it's like seven words, bad back. You don't get, you know, you don't get a discussion, you get just. Yeah.
What did Trish say when I, I stripped you off my back, she goes, she goes, you got E O R, I go, it's that early onset revenue notice. I call it, I'm the old man's.
It is.
Best practices, you know, best term. It's just like all about, how do you sort of drive, like, what's the best answer, what do you, move money down the conveyor belt?
Right. I think that's good.
It sort of works, but then you get much, you're talking about, which is, which is relationship, are computers up again? And I couldn't do anything, well, I actually carried me the room up to, where they, I go, hey, look, I have a completely irrelevant, I mean, the, the piece of electronic equipment, it's totally useless, because the system is down, I couldn't use it to get information, could be vital signs, so I only talked to the patient, I had a piece of paper, and it was great, I told all kinds of stories, and it was totally relevant. I mean, patients, I think, got their money's worth, because they actually got me to interact with.
Your, your full attention, you were typing while you were trying, yeah?
Well, yeah, because you, I, you know, you're doing this, you know, and having time, in fact, the system broke down because of getting hourglasses so many times, and I sent it like a health ticket, you know, file thirteen, it's like, when you send a health ticket to the IT department, it's kind of like, they send you back a global thing, you know, system's slow, like, yeah, we know, it's like, yeah, duh, you know, it's like, do something about it, so I said. Would I have to look at the hourglass more than my patient, or something seriously wrong?
The, the system should be able to keep up with that.
Oh, yeah, I can.
All right, and we are back, continuing on the discussion here for the implementation portion.
Yes, I'll give you background, um, the planning commission will, um, initiate review of the implementation program, starting with policies from the land use chapter. We've also included, um, the land use chapter as a, as a way to reference them. We're also working on other, the, the entire general plan implementation program, and just to let you know that, that we'll also have them on the subsequent meetings on October second and November sixth. Uh, just to give you background on the implementation program, it's, it's a state law requirement that every jurisdiction is required to implement the policies that are outlined in your general plan document, in order to meet the goals and objectives that correspond to those policies. The implementation program includes action items such as zoning ordinance updates and revisions, creation of new ordinances, and other programs or regulations that city staff will develop and implement. It includes specific references to the policies, and it's numbered, and you'll see in the table, um, number of policy to correspond with the implementation measure, the responsible city department that's, um, that would carry that, that measure out, and, um, an anticipated timeframe, and the general plan has a horizon of up to twenty thirty-five, so. To complete the action items. According to the state's general plan, state's two thousand and three guidelines for general plans, the implementation measures must carefully, must be carefully chosen, reflective of local needs, and carried out as an integrated program of complementary and mutually reinforcing actions. So, um, again, the, the table is provided here, uh, what, what staffed attempted to do was take, we looked at each and every policy, and we, um, in some cases where we were able to, to lump a few policies that were germane to the one implementation, we did that, so you'll see a number of policy numbers here under one implementation. So you'll see a number of policy numbers here under one implementation measure. And, um, and in some cases, uh, it only, because of the specificity of that policy, it only, it only translated into one implementation measure. But, um, that's really where we, um, where our, where our approach was, um, you'll see a lot of them are ongoing, because when you look at the general plan policies, there was one overarching, in each, in each section of the general plan, uh, there was a, a, a policy that says, you know, review every two years, review and update every two years. So what we did is, you know, we created that, and we, we specifically chose ongoing as, it's something we're gonna continually check, um, and again, every two years. It, it was really difficult, you know, and La- LaTisia and I, and we're, we're looking at the timeframe, they're in five-year increments up to twenty thirty-five. You know, we felt like, well, everything should be done within the next five years, but, y- you know, it's a matter of workload, and realistically, I mean, if you look at when we amended the R one code, it took a significant amount of time, I mean, some of you weren't part of it, but some of you were. So the, these aren't going to be easy changes, and, 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 and if, if the decision makers decide that some may take more priority than others, we can certainly move them, this isn't set in stone, but it's a, it's a, it's a wish list and a, and a guideline for us to look at in the future, um, as we implement these policies. I don't think there's anything more I need to say.
Do we want to focus the discussion on the, on the table, or the content that follows it?
The table, yeah.
Hmm. Well, y- you know, we, maybe a little bit of both, I mean, we, I, I think what we're seeking is that you like the approach we're, 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 um, we're taking, and how we're framing each of these, um, implementation measures. I think, LaTisia, we were, we, we, we found challenges when the policy said encourage, encourage, I don't know, let's say encourage small houses. Well, even though that's not exactly what it says encourage small houses, well, how do you encourage them when you're taking action into it, and that means you're requiring things?
Mm-hmm.
So, in some cases, we, we really took a leap, and we said, well, you know, either you're going to require certain things, or you're going to create a program that encourages, that program, we don't know what that is, but that's for later discussion. Or we're gonna provide incentives, because when you say encourage, people aren't encouraged to do things unless you.
Motivate them.
Way less, you know, carrot in front of them.
Or poke them with a stick.
Right, or just require them, so, so we found that a little bit challenging, but, you know, we, we worked through them, um.
So I have a real basic question, just before we start, uh, chapter five is the implement, the entire implementation program, right, for all the general, the general plan?
Right.
Okay, so then you have a table five-one, which is, in this case, land use implementation, do, does this, do the tables and the way this implementation items are numbered, does it follow, does it track with the general plan, like, the first section of the general plan is? Or is, is, since you did land use, or is like, for example, if historic preservation was, occurred before land use, would it occur after in the implementation? Or does it track with, with the general plan?
It follows the order.
It does, okay.
Yeah, it follows the order.
And you could really be one table, you could just, table five, and the numbers just continue, but in the same order.
Okay.
That you find it in the general, in the actual.
LaTisia, you know, you're gonna have to talk in the microphone.
Um, it, the table could just be one table for the entire implementation, I, it's called table five-one, but really, this is a carryover from the sample that we had, it could just be table five, that includes all of the implementation measures, and we can just number them from IM, implementation measure, one through.
Two thousand.
I don't know, two hundred, or however many, but the order of the subject will follow.
Will be tracked.
The chapters, you know, we, we, we will keep them organized that way.
Sequentially.
And in this case, land use is our first.
Right, but the, but the title, but the title of, you know, that ti, the title that appears in that gray area would change, once we move on to.
Like, for example, your library implementation program.
Correct.
Okay.
So, do you want our input on, on where you decided to put the checkmark, in terms of the, the, the years in which you're going, we're going to pursue it, is that, is that your?
That's one of the things that you can weigh in on and comment, and, and revise as, as, you know, as you see, as you, you know.
Well, you probably want us to look at the implementation.
You can also comment on the implementation itself, do you think that this addresses, do you think this is the best method of accomplishing the policy, especially on the incentives and the encourage ones, where we, you know, suggested incentive programs, um, but on any of them.
Problem is, we wouldn't know what those are.
We would not know, and it would come to you.
Because it's L something, we'd have to go, well, no, even looking at the table, like, implementation one, I don't know if the L one through four, if any of those say encourage, right?
Well, you, that's why we included the actual text, you do have to cross-reference, that's the only way of really knowing what that policy language is.
Well, you know.
And, but you took it out of the, of the document itself.
Right, I, I, exactly, and that, and that's why it's cross-reference under implements which policies, L, you know, one, whatever, you need to go to that actual policy and read what it says, and then come back here, and, and consider whether that actually, that does address the policy, whether that does implement, you know, that, that particular policy.
So, you know, in, in this exercise, we really looked at each policy and said, okay, how, how does this get implemented?
Right.
Okay, we, we, we either, we amend an ordinance, we create a new ordinance, or we develop a program.
Right.
We establish a program, uh.
Those are essentially the three options that are available.
The three.
Yeah, and you just, and you just figured out from the verbiage which one fell into what category, and then you picked a year.
We picked a time span that we would do it.
You could reasonably get it done.
Right, and, you know, for a while, you know, we were, LaTisia came to me and she had everything.
In the first, in the first column.
You can't do that, um, I, I would like to, but it's, it's just.
That's a goal.
That's a goal, and again, you know, it.
Is there an im- implementation, um, policy which says hire ten people, ten more people to work in the planning department?
Well, I think we can. Should we just, like, go through the first, start looking at them, see if we have any?
Yeah.
Or how do you wanna?
Well, my question is, is, I see you get checkmarks places, yeah, if we don't agree with those, I mean, that's, I understand it just totally almost arbitrary, right, when you put them, you kind of think, well, you'd like to get it done here.
Well, we had, we did have some thought as to what we thought were important to get done.
Sooner.
In the next five years, rather than, you know, ten years from now.
Ten years from now.
Well, to me, you know what, I'm looking, I see you've got this one ten years out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, it, it's, this city established guidelines to minimize direct lines of sight between neighbors' homes, backyards, and encourage preservation of mountain and basin views, you know how often that comes to us, it's like, you know.
Yeah, we, we, we can, we're open to, to moving it.
I'm just thinking, I, I understand, you can't put everything within the first five years, which is obviously, but there's certain ones, that, that might be one.
And I, and I should say, when we add the water, water conservation measures on here, we're probably gonna shift that, we have to, because, we really need to, because we have a lot of work.
Goes to the front of the line.
Yeah, goes.
Right, and then we might, we might.
I, I, I actually had a question about that same one, about the lines of sight one, cause I thought, that's, that's, it's an issue to people, especially with, um.
It's a major point of contention in development.
Side development especially.
Yeah.
Can we go through it, um, just like?
Would you like to, yeah, sure.
If there's, okay, let's go, the first one, if there's any questions, concerns, comments?
Uh, just, I don't have a lot of concerns or comments, but you did spell amend wrong in the first, IM number four.
Yes. Well, on, on the first page, one through three, is there any heartburn or concern or?
Nope.
No. Overall, I thought this looked good, really.
Okay.
Yeah.
So item, okay, now, page, implementation of four through six, the first one, Gina, there's, it's a med.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I have nothing, no issues about the content.
Timeframes, nothing. Seven through nine. So the first one has two.
Yeah, I was questioning why, why can't it just be ongoing? How often do we get cul-de-sacs in streets, I mean, we don't, we're pretty much built out, we're not putting in any new streets.
Yeah, maybe it's just, um, yeah, I don't know why it's on ongoing, it should be, just be the, the span of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. I think we can just remove ongoing.
I could see two areas where that's gonna happen, right, Stone Gate, right, and.
Well, Pete, both of those are not gonna have through streets, cause they're just gonna go into canyons and out, that, there's gonna be one way in, one way out on all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Overall, what about, well, what about the monitor?
Well, that, that may have an entry site in exercise.
If you, if you read the policy, does provide for exceptions, um, given topography and other, you know, limiting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, um, issues, that, and this is just a general reference to some exceptions, it doesn't actually spell them out.
This is to keep somebody from building an exclusive neighborhood.
I, I think we can remove ongoing and just have it, yeah. As we do it, and then it's, 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 it's it, it's done.
Okay, so on i- implementation eight, I highlighted this, and I'm trying to scratch my head what, what I was questioning, but I think it had something to do with, I thought this was not only as it related to new construction, but also additions or expansions?
It did.
So does that need to be spelled out in there, or is it?
Well, it says, um.
Implementation, or does it, did I miss that?
Require noter, require, so establish a pre-application process to require neighbor notification and appeal opportunities with respect to any new construction that exceeds one story in height, or significantly increases the volume and or footprint of the structure.
I guess I, the new construction part, when I read that, it makes me think, like, new construction, like, brand new, rather than an expansion to, and I know, I know it's, it's meant to mean all, all encompassing, but for some reason.
Oh, the way it reads your.
It reads like, okay, any new construction, meaning a brand new dwelling unit.
We could say any new construction.
Indoor modifications that exceed.
And additions.
Additions, yeah.
Yeah, more additions.
Or expansion.
Cause I read it exactly the same way.
I thought we had more detailed language in the, I don't know, when we discussed this, we talked, in the policy? You could pull that.
Yeah.
Because it ties to the policy, well, you know.
All right.
Yeah, cause this isn't policy, this is just a reference, the table is just a reference, okay.
It's a reference saying, we're, we're gonna do that and implement it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think it should just, I guess it should be consistent and.
Right.
Yeah.
Look at that, that's all. I like that it's checked in the first box, so that's good, all right.
Yeah, but I think we want to move the check up.
You wanna move?
Number nine.
You wanna move it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the deal is, if we, Kevin, if we move one up, we have to move one back.
Really?
Yeah.
Or, or meet three times a month.
I, I am, I am eight will stay in the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty, I am nine will move to twenty fifteen, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
We'll find something else to move back.
Yeah, we'll find something else.
Well, Bob eliminated one check in the IM seven, right?
That one about hiring ten new staff people, we'll move that.
Okay, page four, uh, ten through twelve, is there?
I, I'll look at number twelve, we got that encourage stand, sustainability, we could change that word on that?
I think you need to turn on your microphone.
Didn't, didn't we just spend the last two hours talking about that?
We are definitely gonna have to, this is gonna be beefed up.
Okay.
So you know, this is gonna come back.
So the sustainability has, is.
Has much more encompassing, yeah, much more depth.
Much more depth. Okay.
And you could change, say, to incorporate.
Yep.
So IM eleven is the thing about CUPs, that's coming up soon.
Which one is that, IM eleven?
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about the square footage?
Yeah.
Now, does, that's, this is a good point, um, IM eleven, does that reoccur for every land use, or?
It does.
It does?
Just about, yes.
So that's a case where, like, you couldn't, you couldn't say that for all land uses, or there's just too many policies to?
Well, you know, we'll look in that, we'll look into that, if there's.
Cause I mean, I would see you'd wanna continue to enforce and amend, not only the R one, but the R two, the R three, the RC.
Check if, if all other apply.
Do you repeat that, implementation?
I know, we'll, we'll.
That's what I mean.
We'll, 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 we'll check the entire document to see.
Yeah, that would be, that saves some paper. All right, is there anything else there, guys? All right, thirteen through fifteen. Well, it's like thirteen, isn't that, like, the same thing? But it's for the canyon zone?
Well, it's not designed to scale, yes.
Oh, okay.
Cause I think kind of if you lump them together, it's harder to find something, if you're looking to see how, how a policy is being implemented.
And it also tracks with the document better, cause the document is divided by land use.
Yeah, and so if you lump them all together, it's like, you're not gonna find if there's some implementation that exists for that.
Sixteen through eighteen. Kevin, sixteen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
You don't wanna move that up?
Well, I.
This is your, this is your covered porch.
That's the, uh, open porches. I, I just think that, that's, that's basically always ongoing, and.
Oh, you went ongoing?
Is that, is that the way that works with this? We want open porches, we don't want them enclosed?
Well, like, in this case, this is specifically attacking this zoning ordinance for the RC in relation to this issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to rewrite, we have to amend the canyon ordinance.
So we're looking at that.
Yeah, so that would be an ongoing, right?
I don't know, Danny, is it?
I think it's not ongoing.
No, I think, it's, it's not the enforcement of it, it's, it's the creation of the.
The new document.
The document.
Of new zoning.
The policy. And that will be on us. What is a porch?
Yeah.
Well, see, Bob will still be on the commission, he just got back on.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
All right, I don't see anyone have any issue with that, so.
You know, I, if I can make, just point out, implementation measure eighteen. The city shall amend the RC residential zoning ordinance to prohibit the removal of natural elements such as large rocks, plants, and trees. It's, it's, it's a pretty strong statement. So if you have private property and you have.
A large rock.
A rock, a plant, and a tree, you're prohibited from removing them. Which, which really means is, you know, if, if you wish to develop your property, or.
Yeah, but you gotta remember, it's a canyon zone.
I know, I mean, it's, it's just, I wanna make sure you, you, you realize that this, this is, we're gonna amend it to prohibit.
Yeah, uh, well, having.
It doesn't say the removal of all natural elements such as large rocks, plants, and trees.
It does not.
It could mean that, yes.
What are we trying to accomplish?
Yeah, what are we accomplishing, and what's the policy?
Or who can see the rocks, or, what's the cultural history of that large rock?
What are we trying to accomplish?
Well, what, what this was accomplishing was, um, to maintain the, the rustic, natural setting of the canyon, and, um, it was felt.
It says to regulate the removal of natural elements such as large rocks, plants, and trees, or something.
Well, because the word prohibit was used in the policy.
Really?
Mm-hmm. That's pretty.
From the general plan.
Well, if you read temp, do you have ten point seven there? Is it the L, it's L ten point seven, right?
Ten point seven.
Yeah.
I must've missed. Must've missed that one.
Yeah, it's, yeah, require the conservation of, require, that's why we said prohibit. Require the conservation of natural elements such as large rocks, plants and trees. It's a very general statement because it is the general plan policy. But when you come to the implementation, if you're going to require the conservation, we're using prohibit.
I mean.
You know, but you.
Well, conservation is not prohibit, prohibition.
Okay.
Conservation is just.
Protection.
Protection. And it, and it may not apply to all the large rocks on your property, it might just be the ones that, you know, everybody's learned to love as they walk up and down in the canyon.
Yeah, but how do, I mean, I can say personally, when I redid my front yard, I took out, I mean, I don't know how big you're talking about rocks, but, you know.
You timed it right.
Yeah. There's millions of them, well, I mean, I, they were dangerous, my whole front yard is, I mean, where my house is a rock, is a rock garden, I wouldn't have anything. And, and it was poorly designed, the lands, the guy who built the house just dumped these boulders in the art, yard everywhere. Some of them are so too big, I can't even, still can't move them, so.
I, I would probably fathom a guess that, that this is put in there so that somebody doesn't bulldoze a lot and make it, and take out all the trees and rocks and everything, so they can put up, you know, a.
No, it was, it was.
Four unit, but in the canyon. So this is, so we're, we're, we're looking at what policy would we create that would address this issue and still, you know, allow development?
Change it to protect natural elements such as large rocks, plants and trees, rather than prohibit the removal of.
So protect the.
Protect natural elements.
Natural.
Protect the natural elements such.
Such as.
Rather than making it a negative thing, make it a positive thing, which is, well.
That's, that's good.
Yeah, I think it serves the purposes.
And protect allows for, for standards.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that takes, that kind of takes care of that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
How large is a large rock?
You gotta decide, yeah.
Yeah, you've decided.
Do you have to weigh it, do you have to, is it math or comfort? This is gonna be a great discussion, I, you know, I'm around for it.
The diameter.
I think I can protect a little better if it was in San Gabriel.
Well, I mean, I also bought in, brought in pallets of river rock to, to restructure everything, and get rid of the, the, I mean, I couldn't give away the rocks, they were junky enough that, you know, you'd think that people that would want decorative, large boulders in their, in their front yard. And I had the means to move them and here, I'll dump, you know, you want ten of these big things in your front yard, they're all yours, and they, you know, they went it off to the rock quarry.
Now protects a species.
So, in this section, um, that's kinda talking about RC resident canyon zone, I'm, I'm thinking the logic is all of these implementation measures would be reviewed kind of at the same period?
Yeah.
That's why they're all kind of in that twenty twenty.
Right, because it, it just makes sense to just have a comprehensive residential canyon or.
Re- revisit.
Alright, I think, where are we, nineteen?
I just have a, yeah, a question about IM twenty-one. I can't quite. What's the point of that one?
It has to do with permitted uses in the canyon zone if, um, yeah, the, the policy would, would, calls for allowing park in open space areas, so it basically, you could amend the ordinance to, so that these would be permitted uses in the canyon zone by condition use permit, say. Not by right, but, um.
Well, because you wanna make sure there's access and, okay, I'm just curious why that was the way it was.
Rock park.
Twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-four.
What's the urgency on twenty-three?
That's gonna be solved by the Spears amendment.
And so, you know, you'll see, you'll see kind of a pattern of shall continue to enforce, shall continue to enforce. And I think when the, when the committee reviewed this, even though, even though these, you'll find that the zoning already has these provisions. I think when they were crafting these, this language, they felt, well, we don't wanna lose sight that it's important to us, and so we wanna make it statement that this is still our vision and goal and, um, because potentially it could change. And someone could say, well, it wasn't in the general plan, so let's not carry this anymore, so I just wanna make sure you understand that.
I put a note on IM twenty-five. When we, when we looked at the planning for the, for the canyon, um, there was a lot of problem with parking, but a lot of it seemed to be in terms of enforcement. We had a lot of times where contractors would dig up the no parking sign and throw it over the side of the hill. Or spray it with bleach so that it couldn't be read, and then said, well, you can't enforce a, so there, there has, I, I wanted to see if there was something that we could add the word enforcement to that assessment. So, it conduct a parking assessment and enforcement study. Because it may want, we may want to, uh, I mean, we can, they can, they can do a study, but that, the study in and of itself is not going to solve the parking problem.
Okay.
Parking assessment and enforcement study, how does it alleviate parking constraints?
Well, the, the parking constraints are the natural conditions of the canyon where there's very little, very few places to park.
So how does that alleviate it?
Well, if they can, one of the things that they wanted to do is, is to, uh, open up areas where there's shorter term parking, where people can move around, or if you build a house, you have to be able to put everything, all the cars off the street. Those areas. But sometimes during the day up there, you can't get a fire engine to some houses because, uh, there's no place, the, but people parked all over the place, and then, and, and the streets are so narrow, you can't get, you can't get emergency vehicles in.
Yeah, no, I know.
So how does that work in practically, does development services prepare this study? I mean, like, so the city shall, so do you, is it hired out, or?
We, we'd either, um, do it in-house, or we would actually have the help with potential traffic engineers, possibly. You know, kind of look at the whole thing comprehensively, uh, we may have, you know, meetings just to understand how people park. You know, with the, with the, we, we already know through our canyon zone studies that, you know, one of the abuses are people converting their garages into habitable space, you know, and, and it was captured in our, in, in the new canyon zone, but, um, it, what we, how we did, how we, uh, resolved that was actually, you know, had greater flexibility in the canyon zone standards to allow for uncovered parking pads. Even in the front of, even in the front yard, they're allowed. So we're hoping through, through changeover that will help alleviate, but thi- this was really, you know, um, to, to make sure that we kind of maintain that comprehensive review and start to look for some solutions.
So it seems like to me when this, when I see something like this, that I don't, you would wanna do it sooner in terms of, because it's a study to give you information to help resolve.
Right.
An issue.
Good.
Those type of things you'd wanna do early on in the cycle, so that you'd have the rest of the time potentially to figure out how you're gonna resolve it. So, I mean, that would be my only thing is if it's gonna, that's why I asked who's doing it, because, I mean, I'm not trying to, right? Because you're trying to prioritize the work, but if it's something that, if it's a study that can be accomplished.
By contractor.
Yeah, I'd rather see it, I'd rather see it addressed in the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty window.
Bob's point, if there are known safety issues with, you know, getting rescue vehicles around those streets, you don't wanna put that, I mean, you're putting lives at risk if you don't, if you don't address it.
Part of me, I, I, you know, part of me thinks that there should be a lot more red curbs up there because they're curves and, and areas where you can't, you can't get around. And there shouldn't be somebody parked there, that the curve, curb should be red and it should be open.
You know, it's, it's.
It seems where there's a safety issue.
A real challenge, because, you know, people really rely on their street side parking, really rely on them.
Yeah.
If not, they could not live there.
Yeah.
I mean, they would have to be.
Helicoptered.
You know, golf carted, golf carted up there, you know? So i- i- it's a real challenge, you're gonna, if you, if you, you know, if we're gonna create rules on one place, you've gotta know where that's gonna impact someone else, and it's kind of complicated, but this is what we hope to accomplish.
We were talking about off site parking down the hill, right? Shovel people up at one time.
Tram.
That might be difficult because there's not a lot of spaces down at the bottom by Mary's.
A tram would be cool. The canyon.
Put it with the city yards.
No, but you could be, give incentives for smart cars or some smaller vehicles, I mean, it's, I mean, there, there, there are solutions to this if we're clever, but we just haven't spent the time to. You know.
So I, I would like to see if we can move the study up, the assessment study itself, you know.
And it, it really is alleviate, we're not going to solve all the problems, but.
I had a quickie on twenty-seven here. Is it supposed to say exposure to geological and geotechnical hazards? Or geolocial? I don't know, maybe that's a term, I, I don't know.
It's geological.
It's geological.
Yeah, you don't know that term?
Well, I don't know, geolocial.
Yeah, no, it is, it's geological.
Too with geo low size.
Twenty-eight through thirty? Anything, no, good. Thirty-one through thirty-three.
This one also has two timeframes. Thirty-one.
Yeah, the R two zone. I mean, are you looking, are you thinking like there's ongoing little pieces that you're looking at, or a comprehensive kind of review of the whole zone? Because the enforcement's ongoing, right?
Yeah.
The amendment or?
I think it was, it was trying to capture not only continuing to enforce the current zoning, but to, um.
So the amend, the amending would be in the twenty twenty.
Yeah, see, that's.
The ongoing would be the enforcement.
Get two actions in there, so.
Does it need to be separated so that's clear? I mean, it makes sense to us, but that doesn't make sense to others.
We, we could, we could separate them.
I kinda think if it has two timeframes and they applied to two different parts of it, they need to be separate.
Break it up.
Implementation measure.
Was that the same problem with the one?
I think that's like the one where we have the two boxes, yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing, right?
Okay.
It was R one.
Because it's, it.
No, that was different.
It brings unclarity into the.
To when you do it.
Yeah.
So the enforcement is the ongoing element and the amendment is the, is the future date.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what it is, is that some of these things are already part of the ordinance, some of these, uh, criteria are already in the current ordinance, but some will have to be added.
Right.
So we're, we're enforcing the ones that are already in place, but you're also having to amend to include some of new, some new criteria that was recommended.
Right, but I think if there, if there's two different timeframes, they probably should be different implementation measures.
Well, they're also two different actions.
They're two different actions.
One's an enforcement, one's a, like a review and update.
Yeah, I can just split it in two, in, in cases where this happens, I just think it makes it easier to understand what's being proposed.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's the same thing as IM thirty-three.
Yep.
I think that wherever that occurs, it probably need to be split in.
Okay.
Makes it longer, but I think it makes it clearer.
Well, thirty-four, it only has ongoing, but it's the same thing, so. That's where your R three zone, right?
We need to separate that.
So you need one for amending.
Okay. IM thirty-five?
That's the same as the fence.
Thirty-two.
Yeah.
Only with a different.
Well, so why does that one have two checks?
This one just has amend.
Yeah, that should not have two checks.
It should just have one check in the twenty twenty.
Yeah.
It's the same as the R two. Now, when you do something like that where it's across land uses, but it's the same issue? Would you review that at the same time? Even though it's a different land use? Like, so, it's thirty-two and thirty-five, would you do simultaneously?
We, we could, yeah, we could.
Because it's about fencing and landscaping or whatever the hyper, but it, so the issue is the common thing, but the land use is different?
We can look at combining them, that's a good catch.
Well, you don't have to, yeah, I guess combining them, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you'd review it at the same time.
Well, one of them only has perimeter fencing and landscaping, the other one has perimeter fencing, landscaping and parking.
Oh.
But, I mean, it seems as far as they are the same, it might be helpful to review them both at the same time. Rather than have to go through, because they're so.
It depends on how you agendize it, do you agendize the issue, or do you agendize it by the land use?
Yeah, but we can make amendments that have, you know, different sections of the code.
Then that's fine, then just, you know.
With the common theme that we're, you know.
Yeah, but we're typically not just amending for one thing, we're, we're amending these, each ordinance for different things, excuse me. So, that means we will be bringing two ordinances at the same time.
Well, not, well, like R two and R three.
Some of the same things, but not all the same things. You see what I mean, in terms of, of actually bringing it to you for consideration, we'd be bringing two entire ordinances.
We may not, so, we may not, depending if it's just one aspect of it, it's just amending this section to, this section in R two, amending that section in R three.
Because it's about the same item.
What I think might be more efficient is to do everything that needs to be done for one ordinance and capture everything, you know what I mean? Instead of just going one at a time for each ordinance.
Well, the only problem, I mean, I, I see that, the only thing, and, and I'm thinking in practical terms, like if we were to be discussing, you know, height of perimeter fencing and entrance locations as related to R two. It seems like a really good time to discuss it also for how it would affect R three. As opposed to we discuss it and then like.
Done by the topic, or it's done by the, the land use.
Six months later, we discuss.
You know.
Yeah.
I mean, from a discussion standpoint, or an amending standpoint, it seems like if the issue's at hand, how does it affect multiple land uses? Or in multiple land uses would be pertinent and valid versus talking about it and then six months later talking about it again relative to another, I don't know, but.
But how you bring it to us will be important, because you'll, you'll see it in relationship to one kind of land use. And we may want to have consistency across the whole board, and we'll say, well, we'll do that one and pick up the other ones while we do it. But we may only see it in, you know, like R one, since that has a lot more.
Right.
Business for you.
Well, then, I don't know, maybe you wanna leave them as separate, maybe you don't wanna combine them. You know, even though they're the same, because then that, that leaves the discretion.
Up to you.
To you to, whether you, we review those two implementations at the same time or two different times. To you to whether you, we review those two implementations at the same time or two different times. All right, thirty-six, thirty-seven? Anything? Nothing? All right. Thirty-eight to forty? Okay, so thirty-eight.
About thirty-eight. And I didn't, I didn't look back, but the commercial zone now encourages properties to be close, have not that much of a setback, right? And this is encouraging more of a setback?
Yes.
Have a wider sidewalk.
So that the diners don't take up the whole sidewalk and people aren't going sideways.
Right.
It's currently by feet.
Right. So that would only apply for new construction anyway, so. It has to construct something new.
This is, this could be another one where we separate it out, there's two.
Well, it's the same, it's enforcing and.
And ongoing, so we just separate?
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them here. Okay.
Same with thirty-nine. All right. Forty-one to forty-three?
Good.
Good. Forty-four through forty-six?
You realize that staff is having a, a break in twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty? The general plan.
Does not have a break, is that what you're saying?
We're, we're just giving ourselves a break. I'm joking, it's just that we.
Assuming everything gets done by twenty-twenty-five, right?
Right.
Well, three times a month, you could probably do it.
Yeah, that's a vacation. All right, um.
Could you writing your general plan?
Yeah, we could probably. All right, forty-seven through forty-nine? Oh, I had, on forty-nine, do we need to introduce something? You're, I assume you're talking about the manufacturing zone?
Yes.
It says, "Street used to make the area more attractive in reducing its industrial appearance." But that could be any area, I don't know, I mean, is it specific to that land use in that area?
Yeah, because it's, it goes to L thirty-one point nine, which is, um.
Seems like you should just add, I mean, in every one of these implementations, it says to enforce the M parentheses, manufacturing zone.
Yeah.
I don't know why we can, the addition of street used to make the M zone.
Okay.
Manufacturing area more attractive.
Yeah. It's fine.
It's only one street. How many trees are on that street?
Have you seen the trees on?
Yeah, well, there you go.
All right, fifty through fifty-two?
Pretty soon we won't even have an M-zone anyway.
Nothing? Fifty-three, fifty-four?
We're almost done.
So fifty-three, I had a question. This is about the institutional zone and allowing reuse of it for certain areas. Require, you know, allow reuse. So, does allow mean that it would automatically be permitted or does that, is there some kind of CUP thing going on with that?
There's a master plan.
Requires a master plan and, which will come before you.
But it just says allow reuse for the following purposes. And would that be automatically allow it or?
It, it would, because those are the, it would, those are the uses that are identified as, um, you know, permitted and allowable uses, so it's, it's a stating that we would.
So if you want to change your open space to a school, open space to something else, it's automatically permitted? But would they be required to have a new master plan?
Yes.
If you change the use?
It's just the list of permitted uses.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to tease out if the use gets changed, if it would automatically require some kind of.
It would require any kind of, um, any expansion.
I'm not talking about expansion, I'm just talking about changing.
Like if you switched, if you went from institutional to.
Airport.
To a retreat center or two.
Or it's not allowed.
You went from, if you went from school to health organization, say, retreat, you know, if you went from a retreat center to a housing for institutional use.
No, this, this would allow it, subject to approval of a master plan.
And would a master plan be required just for a change in use? Because I think it should be, if the use has changed, it probably should be reviewed. Now, I don't know what the, I just called my, it called my attention to this issue. Because it could involve an intensification of, of use, you know, if you change.
Right, I mean, it, it would likely entail, you know, the, you know, required environmental review and, and.
I just think we should check to see what it's, what that, because it says allow.
It does, yeah.
It says allow reuse, which to me means there wouldn't be review.
I will look at it.
But that's no different than IM.
This basically just repeats the language that's in the policy. The policy only calls for a master plan, but if you think that that policy should call for a conditional use permit, I mean, you could recommend a change to that as well. If you, if you feel like a reuse, a change of use might.
Automatically trigger a CUP.
Yeah.
Doesn't the zoning already, our zoning code already?
I think it might, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but there, there's a list of uses that are only.
They're, they're permitted uses, but it is still subject to a.
Conditional use permit.
Yeah, I would just like to check and make, I just like to make sure that a change of use would require a CUP, because I think it stands for reason it should in most cases in these, because it could be a pretty significant change in land use, right? Even though it's still institutional.
Is that the same sort of mechanism in the other land uses resident? I mean, I can see for institutional, because you may be taking a large piece of property.
Right.
And converting to a more intense use, so a CUP, but do we do that? If it's a permitted use, let's say, other permitted use, like an R-one, two, three or something?
If it's a permitted use, it's a permitted use.
Then it's, then it's, there's no, that CUP requirement would only be something specific to.
Well, the, in, in the conditional use permit ordinance, the variances in conditional permit, there are a list of uses that are allowed in all zones by conditional use permit, including R-one, R-two, R-three, but it does require conditional use permit already.
Like a roller rink or a circus.
Already is that way.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm serious, there are.
Yeah, there's.
But there's also a list of, like, an R-one, two, three, that are just permitted uses.
By, by, right.
By default.
Right, like a single family use in an R-one zone is allowed.
Right.
And it doesn't necessarily require a CUP unless, say, that you're building a house that's over four thousand square feet, then it does trigger that. But, but there are actual, actual uses aside from a single family home in an R-one that may be permitted pursuant to the approval of a conditional use permit.
So that's covered, that's covered then, that covers this.
I just want to make sure that, that the, that either a master plan or a conditional use permit is required.
It's not automatic, yeah, I agree.
For a change of use within an institutional zone.
We'll, we'll double check the, the manufacturing and then.
You do have the option of including that in the policy if you want also.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think I would like to see it in the policy if it's not.
So, so it's clear.
So it's clear, yeah, because I think that some of these changes could be pretty major. Have, you know, if they want to take, what's, what's an institutional zone here and change it to something other complete use is, could be a big deal.
So if you see that, it combines a master plan and a conditional use permit.
And, and actually, the way you can do it is because it, fifty-three has another one of these two check deals and, and the second check where, where you talk about amend, you know, make sure that the CUP, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So fifty-four, the only thing I was trying to figure out, which I think I might know the answer to, but it's not circular in the sense of, it's saying if you have school sites, they can't be re-zoned, it's prohibited to rezone them to something other than open space or recreational needs or another school. But you couldn't take that site and then make a, a permitted use of, you know, like a civic or retreat center, right? It's saying you can't.
Unless someone, unless there's a finding made. That they will never need that site to meet future educational needs, which would be a very hard finding to make.
But above, but above it, schools in fifty-three is considered an institutional use that could be changed to any of those listed in fifty-three.
Oh.
Right, so I'm trying to find out, is it, is it negating itself kind of or?
Is it, um?
Contradicting? Because in fifty-three, school is an institutional land use and it can be changed to any of those other things.
Well, if it's an institute, if it's in an institutional zone.
There, there's two.
It's a subset, in a way.
A subset, in other words, of, of all, there are institutions in institutional zones and there's schools in institutional zones. And if the school is in an institutional zone, then it can't be, the land can't be reused for other purposes until we decide that there's no more need for a school. Because it's really hard to, to recapture enough land to, to build a school. Because one, you know, because otherwise you're buying houses at, you know, a million five a pop.
Well, this applies to both private and public schools, right?
Schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't differentiate.
That's fine.
All right. Fifty-five, fifty-six and fifty-seven? All right, I think we got it.
Thank you, this is great.
Can I? I like to be the bad guy, but I missed out on a lot of the, um, previous discussion on the general plan and land use. And the only thing that I, I had two tabs that, um, that just struck me and maybe it's something that's, you know, you guys already addressed, but in, in the land use designations, you went into great detail about paths and nodes. And you included in nodes, entrance nodes to the city. But I would like to submit that there are a couple of places in the city that are also nodes where, um, people come to the city and go into the national forest and what might soon be the national monument if the, if that bill goes through. And so we have a couple trails in town that are, would be, would they be exit nodes? I don't know, but they, they become a, I mean, we have a couple hundred people a weekend, travel to Sierra Madre in order to use those nodes.
Could be entrance nodes.
It could be entrance nodes, however you want to define them, but, but they are, they are ways from transitioning to, from Sierra Madre into a national forest or a, it could make, what might become a national park.
Into the, a national monument or?
That's a very good point.
So I would, I would include those because I think they're both culturally significant and.
Would you, would you classify particular trails that would?
Well, there are only two, Bailey Canyon Trail and Mount Wilson Trail, that, that leave Sierra Madre and go up into the, what is now the national forest.
Okay.
So I would, um.
Add those.
I would add those.
Right.
And the, the, let's see, what else was on my curiosity list?
Are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
So the other one I noticed was the, in the canyon, preservation of existing rustic atmosphere. An L-ten undertake to develop guidelines to encourage the use of materials which are characteristic to existing development in the canyon. Some of those building materials are not fire safe.
We, we had a little bit of concern about that, he said.
Wait, L-ten, I think we talked about that.
We talked about that at the time.
Uh, fire resistive.
I would say we're allowed by fire code, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be, you know, by law, they're going to be limited to the materials used, so, you know.
But I wouldn't.
They're going to have it compatible because of its appearance, still it has to be, you know, a certain fire resistant.
I, I don't mind compatibility in, in appearance, but in construction, you know, because you can have stuff that looks like wood that's not flammable, but you can't, you know, but, you know, when you cover that house with shingles, it's a.
I thought we discussed.
Emotional problem.
We had to be fire.
What, what, what numbers?
L-ten, preserve the existing rustic, page twenty.
L-ten six, page twenty-one? You got your wish.
I remember, we did have that conversation.
We did, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, you know, I wasn't here.
And characteristic doesn't mean it has to be, you know, the same non-fire resistant material.
Yeah, I know, it could be.
Right, it's going to be limited, I mean, we're not going to let it go through.
Okay. And, and the only other thing that I looked at was, um, L-thirty-eight three.
What page is that?
Uh, page twenty-eight, under natural open space map designation. It talked about establishing the role of natural open space as an interface to the wilderness area. I think you may want to amend that to the, you know, the national forest and/or national monument as it.
Oh, no, isn't that the one we had a long discussion about?
Which one?
Wilderness versus wildland.
Wildland, I remember, wildland.
L-thirty?
Eight point three. Let me see here, L-thirty-eight point.
Thirty-eight point three, that's here. Where is that, geez?
Wait, establish a role of natural open space as an interface to the wa- wilderness area.
And I would, I would make that the national forest, you know, slash national park. Because that's where you go when you leave Sierra Madre.
Say that, say that again, I'm sorry, national park?
Well, you could just say Angeles National Forest.
Right now, it's the Angeles National Forest. If it's Judy Chu who gets her wish, it's going to be the, a national park.
Yeah, it'd be a national monument.
National monument, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What changes with that designation?
A lot of money and a lot of protection.
It belongs to a different federal agency, it belongs to the.
Department of Interior.
Department of Interior rather than the Department of Agriculture.
What is it, what's?
Well, it has to do with actual whole philosophy of use, because the, uh, Department of Interior has more to do with protection and the Department of Agriculture has more to do with mixed use, so it's, it's a, it's a whole different thing.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
I work for both departments.
So what does it mean to us?
Well, we're, we'd be adjacent to a national monument.
Like a seventy or something.
And that, that might have significant impact on, you know, what people coming, coming and going and all kinds of stuff.
Different kinds of facilities, different kinds of interpretive materials, different levels of staffing, there could be different rules about firefighting, there could be.
Is it a good thing?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it is, I think it's good, it'll, it'd be a good thing, but we'll see how it gets.
Higher level of protection of the natural environment.
Some, some of Monrovia's a, a little upset because they have some wild, wilderness areas that they've put in and they, they want to make sure that they main control over it, but I don't see there's a conflict that they're going to lose control.
What's the site, what's the scope of the, of the change from where to where?
Oh, it's huge.
What change, the all, the whole national forest?
Uh, I believe it's only the part that faces this side, not the backside, but I don't, but I'm not absolute on that. I haven't seen all the maps.
All right.
Okay.
So we are on to oral communication.
One, one question, we've got the, we had, we were having a discussion about lowering the threshold for square footage.
Yes.
When's that coming up?
October eighteenth meeting, yeah, it's the second.
Kevin, we got this section called? Kevin, we got this section called Planning Commission Communication. So ask that again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ask that again at- This is an additional, if any person addressing the patient on any item not on the agenda, when addressing the commission, keep your comments to four minutes and so we can keep an orderly, timely meeting and I don't see anyone in the audience.
At all.
At all, literally. So we will close it, for audience comments, and bring it to the planning commission.
But now you can officially write some temporary- Yeah, the, the idea of reducing the square feet threshold from four thousand to three thousand, it'll come to you for discussion on October eighteenth. We're not bringing an ordinance, so it won't be a public hearing, but you'll, you'll give us a conversation and we, you may direct us that evening to come back with the actual ordinance.
One question, do we, do you know anything for our next meeting? If we will be hearing anything further on One Carter?
Yeah, it's continued to that meeting. I don't think they've submitted, have they resubmitted yet? No.
Is that really likely? They don't usually have that, their history has not been with a fast turnover.
Right. But it's continued. Unless they, yeah, unless they ask for a further continuance, but-
I won't be here on the eighteenth.
Okay.
So speaking of One Carter, many moons ago, I asked for the story poles to be removed.
We've asked them.
Okay.
I know.
It's a disaster zone up there, okay? It is, I don't know if you walked the property recently?
I was there, I mean, I was there-
It's awful, okay? It's, you got wood, wood pieces falling off. I understand they moved the story poles on the one that's still up for review, but the other two, those projects are not proceeding.
I'll make a note.
You can make a note, but we've talked about this, it's a disaster zone up there.
Well, we've informed them.
Okay, so, and number two, we've got ongoing problems up there with burnt items, firecrackers, people having sex in cars, and I don't know what the enforcement issues are, but someone's got to watch that property because it's just, it's just a free-for-all up there. And, and I can tell you, we're seeing burnt items, we walk our dogs there, several, several people in town do. We find burnt items along things, so people are playing with fire, they're setting off firecrackers and if we want a fire that's going to take out the entire town, that's where it's going to start.
They put a chain up across that one side.
But they're lifting up the chain and they're driving underneath the chain and they're going back up to the top and they're having a party up there. It's like a, it's like, it's like a free-for-all. And I don't know what the, you know, but if you guys, I'm jumping right here, I want the video. If a fire starts up there, it's going to come roaring down from, from there because it's bone dry up there and all the other stuff.
There's no one to see it, there's the other, and there's no one to see it.
I will, I will relay this to the police chief.
I mean, my wife's called probably half a dozen times, but, so those two things, if they're going to own a piece of property, we have to do what we ever have to do to make it civil, but they have to do what they have to do to make it civil. And right now, it's not, it's not a great place, so.
It doesn't look like they've been following the lay of the law if we've already asked them to remove the poles.
Do we have anything on that as far as enforcement for it to remove? Like if the city were to remove it to add a cost to them?
We can take it to that step, we've, we've already, I mean, numerous times.
As upset as the town is over it now, if some kids go up there and set off a firecracker and the side of the hill comes down and we lose a bunch of houses, I think people are really going to be upset.
Turn the town down.
And I'm telling you that we're seeing enough burnt items laying around the sides of the street. You can't, the warning signs should be up.
We can provide a, a notice of violation.
Well, it's not their fault that people are going up there and doing anything. We've got to find a way to watch that property better because it's not, because you're right, they did put a chain. People are going right underneath.
I'm speaking specifically on the story poles.
Those are two separate issues, story poles are their problem and they need to be knocked down, but I'm just telling you, we got to watch that property or we're going to have a problem.
Well, aren't those streets, private streets?
No, they're not.
They're not, no, I couldn't remember.
No, it's public.
And there is, there is-
I mean, some people objected to the, to the chain. The only reason they put the chain up was because, again, they're just having a perpetual party up there.
Well, I mean, I know there's a sign up there that says no trespassing, but I, that sign is in violation of the, of the agreement with the property owners which says that there is a walkway that's available for everyone to use up to the top. And that sign is, every time I see it, I know there's an issue about this, but there's also an issue about someday when it's not, when this isn't the issue, that that needs to be available for people from the community to walk up there.
I think we should be very afraid of a fire starting up there, given the partying that's going on up there. Beer cans, all that kind of stuff, I mean, they're, you can see what's going on up there. It's not, you have to be, you know.
Okay, okay.
Well, it sounds like there's more than one problem. I did see, I did, did hear you mention twice about the fire and you just kind of went right over the sex of the cars again, but that wasn't bothering you as much as the fire going.
I think altogether.
I could be more graphic, but you can get an idea of the remains that are being left behind. And, and the dogs are finding them. And it's, sounds like it's funny and all that until your dog is finding the remains.
Is that where the guy got, the guy got, is that where the guy got shot up there?
Danny?
It's not a good situation.
Just remind you, your next meeting is September-
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. In addition to the One Carter project that's being continued, I can't remember what else is on there. We'd have to look, do you, do you recall off the top of your head? Hart Park House. It, it, it had gone to, it went to the senior commission, it went to the community services commission and so you'll have, you'll have their input and, but, but the decision lies with this commission in terms of your direction.
I really hope Commissioner Buckles is here. It's going to be really important, that's, that's his project.
Yeah, and maybe one other item.
A request for historic designation also is on the agenda.
Another property.
Great. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we are adjourned.